Okay, well, good evening and welcome to the March seventeenth St. Patrick's Day edition of the Phillips Town Planning Board meeting. For all of those of you who come out on this holiday, happy St. Patrick's Day and thank you for your time and attention. If this connection and my participation becomes thready, I'm going to ask Neil Toman to take over my stead in the room. Cheryl, can you go have the roll call, please?
Kim Connor.
Here.
Agna.
Here.
Peter Lewis.
Here.
Laura O'Connell.
Yeah.
Neil Toman.
Here.
Heidi Wendell.
Here.
Neil Zuckerman.
Here. All right, thank you for that. And just as I mentioned last month, I am on vacation for my family's spring break, but the wheels of justice and the wheels of government continue to move, so I'm here with you all. Can I get a motion to approve the January twentieth minutes, please, of the Phillips Town Planning Board?
Make that move.
First, Peter second. Any discussion? Any solutions, corrections, anything? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, abstentions, thank you. All right, and then a motion for the January twenty-seventh public hearing that we did?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Peter. Kim, second. Any discussion, edits, changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you very much. All right. Cheryl, can you take us through the request from thirty-six twenty-two Route nine, please?
Okay. The approval resolution for the above-mentioned property requires that copies of the site plan be provided six months after the date of the resolution. The applicant requests a six-month extension to provide the site plans as we are still working with the New York State DOT on approval of the highway work permit. All other required permits have been secured and are current, and no changes to the plans are currently anticipated. We look forward to providing the site plans for signature as soon as the New York State DOT permitting process is complete. Should you have any other questions or comments, please feel free to contact our office in site engineering.
Okay, thank you. Steve, comments on this?
Code one seventy-five sixty-eight A, once site plan approval is granted, they have six months to submit the site plan for signature. They have, what is it? Twenty-four months to complete all conditions and to get a building permit. The planning board has the right, has the obligation to grant one as on request, six-month extension. After that, it's good cause shown to get extension. So this is their one as of right extension, the board should vote to grant it.
Ron, anything you want to add?
No, Steve summarized what the issue is before you.
Okay, great. All right, can I get a motion for this automatic extension or as of right?
As of right, it's not automatic, it's left random.
Okay.
Well, if they apply late, you could say no, but I mean, if they're applying on time.
Fair. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion? Anyone? No? All right, can I have a vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Okay, great. All right, so the goal and check, we, we had a long discussion at our last meeting. We directed Ron to prepare approval resolutions. Ron, anything to add about those resolutions?
No, it's very typical resolution for a site plan application before you. There are some technical issues to be addressed. I've been working with the design engineer on it. So the one final condition, in addition to payment of fees and receipt of outside agency approvals, is to resolve the site plan issues that I've identified to the design engineer, and he's, he's on board with it, he understands.
Okay. Adam, I don't think we have a need for you to comment unless someone has a question. So let me, I'm going to ask for a motion, and if... Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion, and then if there's any comments, we'll come to you, but otherwise, I assume that will not be the case. So can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as stated, as prepared by Ron? Thank you, Kim, second.
A second.
Thank you, Dennis. Any discussion, any questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. All right, Mr. Gold and Chick, best of luck with your project.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right, good evening. Okay, we have three public hearings we're going to engage in now. The first two, I suspect, will be relatively short, or at least consistent with our historic hearings. And then we will enter into the second continuation, or said another way, the third public hearing for the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. I'll, I'll share some comments before we start that third public hearing, but to be clear, for all those of you in the room in Phillips Town and all of my friends here in Zoom land, please do not raise your hand for participation in the other two hearings if you wish to speak only for the Shakespeare Festival. There's a lot of complexity with doing this in Zoom. We've done, I think, a good job the last two meetings, but please do us the favor of keeping the commentary in the chat in Zoom to a minimum, and please only raise your hand when we come to the public hearing you're here to comment on. So hopefully that's clear. And so I'll turn over Cheryl to read the, the, the notice for Sadlon and Wensky for that public hearing.
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, starting at seven-thirty PM in person at the Phillips Town Town Hall and via Zoom to consider the following application: Sadlon and Wensky, eight twenty-five Route ninety Garrison, New York, one oh five two four, tax map number seven-one point dash one dash one-three-point-one-one-one. Minor project: Development of a new single-family dwelling, accessory building, and in-ground swimming pool to be served by a new septic system and water well and related site improvements. At said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. Copies of the application flat map and other related materials can be seen in the office of the planning board at the building department to Cedar Street, Cold Spring. Prior contact, Cheryl Rocket, is required to arrange access to the documents. If you would like, dated at Phillips Town, New York, the seventeenth day of February twenty-twenty-two, Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Couldn't say the better myself, Cheryl, thank you. Okay, are there any members of the public in the room who wish to speak on Sadlon and Wensky? Mr. Toman, do you see anyone who is?
Not seeing anything here, Mr. Zuckerman.
Thank you, sir. Anyone in Zoom land would like to speak on Sadlon and Wensky? Anyone at all?
On the internet.
Susie Gilbert's hand is raised, but I'm going to guess Miss Gilbert is not here for Sadlon and Wensky, unless that's not the case, Miss Gilbert. No, okay, she is not here for that. Okay, well, I'll hold it open for another couple of seconds, see if anyone wants to comment. Ron or Steve, anything you want to add about the project? I know we had our site visit last time, last two weeks ago, and we did not have any members of the public in attendance either. Oh, yes, we did. That's not true. We did have one member of the public.
Right, the, the board has before it two separate memorandums from my office. One just summarizes the observations that the board made at the site visit on the sixth. For the most part, I think the board was satisfied with their understanding of the project. The DOT approval for access is still outstanding. And I've also given you a memorandum from earlier in the week, just summarizing those issues. You also have building elevations that you've seen, I think, were reviewed in previous meetings and might have been there at the site visit, just to make sure that you're satisfied with those. And then other than that, upon the close of the public hearing, if you're so disposed, you could direct that a resolution be prepared for the next meeting.
Thank you, Ron. Steve, anything?
Appropriate to close the public hearing at this, this juncture. The only issue that I didn't see anything written up on, maybe I overlooked it. You were going to look into the Arnold's Flight Trail. Was everyone satisfied with the plans for development in regard to the historic trail?
I, I believe that's fair to say on behalf of everyone that that was discussed. Okay, if there's nobody in the room or in Zoom land who would like to speak, I'm going to say going once. Going twice. Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing for Sadlon and Wensky, please?
Okay.
Laura, second.
A second.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, any comments, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, opposed, abstentions. All right, the, the public hearing is closed. I, Ron, Ron has suggested, and is keeping with our past behaviors, that after the close of the public hearing, we can authorize him to create approval resolutions for our next meeting's approval. I'd like a motion to that effect, please.
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Neil, second.
Second.
Thank you, Peter. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Ron, you're so directed.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir. All right, Cheryl, your mellifluous voice can now read Cedar Hill Landscaping, please.
Planning Board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two, starting at seven-thirty PM in person at the Phillips Town Town Hall, two thirty-eight Main Street, Cold Spring, New York, and via Zoom to consider the following application: Cedar Hill Landscaping, De Paulus, eighteen East Mountain Road North, Cold Spring, New York, one oh five one six, tax map number one-seven dot dash one dash forty-two. Major project: The applicant proposes to construct a new forty-eight-by-eighty garage barn on the property to house equipment for landscape company. Site improvements will include an extension of the driveway, employee parking, and material disorders. The use of the existing single-family home will continue, and existing apartment of the garage will be utilized for office of the landscape company. Dated at Phillips Town, New York, the seventeenth day of February twenty-twenty-two, Neil Zuckerman, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Cheryl. All right. Ron, anything you want to say before we start this on Cedar Hill?
I know, you've got a technical memorandum from my office. I've tried to summarize the changes on the latest site plans that are before the board and that you're reviewing for the public hearing tonight. They've made a variety of changes. They still have building plans to present to you to illustrate the exterior changes that'll be showing on the existing garage, as well as the proposed storage barn in the back. And then lastly, the board would just want to understand if there's any traffic concerns that they might envision for the commercial business occupying the site.
Could you summarize for us those changes, please?
Sure. They've now included infiltration facilities to pick up the impervious surface of the, of the new storage barn being placed in the back, which was a, an issue we had raised in prior reviews. They've addressed the potential bad habitat for the site and have acknowledged that they'll set, or they'll comply with DC regulations on the taking of any trees that must be removed. They've extended the evergreen screening that they had proposed along the frontage of the property. They extended that further east. And again, they've, one other issue that the board had raised is the storage of, of equipment outside. They've now committed to storing all commercial and landscaping equipment within the existing barn and the, the proposed garage as well. And they've also committed to no outdoor signage to be placed on the property, and there will be no salt storage anywhere on the site.
All right, very helpful. Board members, questions for Ron before we get to the public? So given that there's some change, that'd be useful. Anyone in the room, board members?
Not seeing any hands, Neil, no.
Okay, Laura, do you have any asks? No? All right, so let's, let's turn over the public. If there's any members, are there any members of the public who want to speak in the room? Okay, I, I believe there are two people who would like to speak on Zoom. I see Madeline McGinley, and I see Bettina Oats, who I believe are both for this application. So Cheryl, oh, Cheryl just took off. Cheryl, do you need to unlock Madeline or Bettina to speak?
Can you do it from back there?
All right, Madeline, you're, you're off mute. I can, I can't see you, but I see your name. So you have the floor.
My comments focus on the impact this project will have on traffic, access, and the residential character of East Mountain Road North. I have lived on East Mountain Road North for nearly twenty years, so I am familiar with the problematic situation at the intersection of Route nine and East Mountain North. I wonder if a traffic study has been done for this project. East Mountain Road, East Mountain Road North is a narrow road, creating a bottleneck situation at the Route nine intersection. Two cars can barely pass. If a large truck or a large car is waiting to pull out onto Route nine, and you're traveling on Route nine, there isn't enough room to pull into East Mountain Road North. So you end up waiting on Route nine until the vehicle can pull out. So my question is, would the road be widened here? This is an already dangerous intersection and the site of many accidents. It's a fifty mile per hour zone. It's already difficult to pull out onto Route nine, especially to make a left turn, and there are often cars backed up, not to mention that it's a school bus route. The response made by Beatty and Watson to the Phillips Town engineer says that there will be a minimum impact because the trucks from Cedar Hill will be entering and exiting the site outside of rush hour times, which they say is between four-thirty and five-thirty in the evening. Anyone who travels on Route nine can attest to the fact that rush hour starts a lot earlier than four-thirty PM. They also state that morning rush hour will be between seven and eight PM. These days, there is so much traffic on Route nine, morning rush hour has turned into morning rush hours, plural. I realize that this is a different application, but if Hudson Highlands Reserve ends up using East Mountain Road North as an entry point, this will make matters even worse. No project can be seen on its own, but it's a cumulative effect with other projects being proposed in the same area. This must be viewed as a totality with good planning board practices. My final comments are about the character of East Mountain Road North, which is a country residential road, many portions lined with stone walls and a stream. This project proposes on the site plan and indicates that some of the stone walls would be removed to create a wider opening for the trucks to turn, and the driveway itself would be widened onto East Mountain Road North, further affecting the character of the road. So you have a commercial-scale driveway on a residential-scale road. When you enter Route nine, when you enter East Mountain Road North, Route nine, you notice immediately the difference from fast to slow, from wide to narrow, from flat to steep. You're on your way to climbing a mountain, from the commercial hustle of Route nine and bustle to a quiet, rural, even magical road. I am concerned that this project will affect that. And how is it that a commercial venture with large trucks is able to use a residential road for its primary access? Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline, appreciate it. Bettina, you're next, followed by James.
Hi, yes, I hope everybody can hear me. My name is Bettina Oats, and I live on East Mountain Road North with my family for fifteen years now. And we've seen the traffic increase there, and I'm concerned about even more traffic at that intersection of Route nine and East Mountain Road North. If this business will be in operation as proposed, as it stands, we're already waiting anywhere from one to three minutes, and we've timed it because it sometimes really seems so long for a turn onto Route nine every weekday morning. Sometimes there's a line of two or three cars waiting for their turns, and we, we often do risky, make risky decisions, I think, to get out on that road, and it's fifty-five miles an hour, per hour, and that's on... So likewise, when you get home from Route nine traveling south, and you try to take a left turn, like Madeline said, onto East Mountain Road North, has gotten so much more dangerous now, and if you wait there and you see the cars zoom by you or pile up behind you, it's very nerve-wracking and just dangerous. So I, I read that there's, I think, twelve additional trips in the morning and twelve trips at night that Mr. Watson was estimating, and that's really at the very low end of what could happen here. So thinking that workers have to come back for resupply during the day, and the business might get more employees if they're doing well, and the times of the use of the roads cannot be predicted for, before rush hours. And as Madeline also mentioned, that in addition to this project, East Mountain Road North is still vulnerable to be an access road for Hudson Highlands Reserve. So we don't know what's coming there. There will be dozens more trips a day into and out of our road, so we have to see everything at, at once and account for everything. My question tonight is, I don't know if this is possible, but could there be a possibility that Cedar Hill is getting an easement directly onto Route nine? It's abutting another landscape business that's going in. I did not look at the site plans in detail, but perhaps there's a way to disperse some of the additional traffic load on East Mountain Road North. Thank you.
Thank you, Bettina. James, you're up. There you go, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor, James.
Awesome, thank you. Um, I hope you guys are all well. I would like to essentially echo some of my neighbors' concern. Oh, by the way, I live, I live on Esselborn. I'm newer to Esselborn. I've actually looked at the property that's, that, that the applicant is going to develop and cool house on it. Anyway, so I'm concerned, I'm concerned about traffic as well. I'm specifically concerned about the commercial traffic. I think that it's unusual and kind of out of character for commercial trucks to be originating from our road. It's not unusual to have trucks on our road, but usually they're providing a service to people who live here. So I think that, uh, that juxtaposition, I guess, of, of trucks coming out of our road at, at any hours of the day is, is a bit concerning. Since I have seen the, the property, I've actually noticed there's a lot of invasive Japanese knotweed on the property. I didn't see that addressed on any of the landscaping plans. I think if you're going to develop a property, a forested property in a community like this, maybe that would be something to address. I would love to see that addressed. Yeah, that's, that's basically it for me. It just seems a bit out of character.
Okay, thank you, James. I know, I see Margaret is here and unmuted, and Margaret represents Beatty and Watson, which probably represents the, which does represent the applicant. Before, Margaret, we go to you with any, I assume, responses. Let's just see if any other members of the public wish to speak. Neil Toman, do you see anyone in the room?
We don't have anyone.
Did we lose the room? I think we lost the room. Can you hear us, Cheryl?
We can hear you, yeah.
Oh, good. Anyone in the room?
Anything in the room, Neil, no.
Okay, great, sorry. Zoom land, anyone else want to speak on the Cedar Hill application, please? Okay, Margaret, why don't you go ahead? Oh, sorry, Denise, Miss Frazenda, do you want to speak? Cheryl, do you want to let in, Miss Frazenda?
Yeah, she sold the land.
Okay, Madeline, like, Madeline, you should mute. Cheryl, do you want to let in? Is she, did we get her? Yes, okay, Denise, go ahead, please. Denise, can you hear me? You're on mute, Denise. But your sunset is a beautiful photograph. That is inspiring us all to continue to follow most people leaving New York State for warmer climes. Says the governor is very concerned, as you all know. All right, that's enough editorial remark, Miss Frazenda, do you want to speak? No? Can we get her off mute? No? All right, Margaret, why don't you go ahead? Maybe Denise can figure it out on mute.
Um, hi, my name is Margaret McManus with Beatty and Watson. Um, I can speak about the traffic first and then talk about the colors of the building. Um, so, um, when we, we relied on the information from the traffic study that was conducted for the Hudson Highland Reserve when we looked at the impacts of the traffic. Um, the, the road does function at an E, which is during peak hours, which is probably every road along Route nine functions at about an E. Adding the twelve trips, um, and it's not during the peak, and it's, it's not rush hour, but peak hour that we look at. And, um, adding the trips on non-peak hours will not change, um, the level of service. It will trip it from a E to an F. And even if those trips were conducted during the peak hour, it would still not change the level of service from an E to an F. It would continue to stay at a level E. Um, and that's why we continue to say that even though it, they may not, and the, the additional traffic is not a large impact. Um, the, most of the trucks are pickup trucks. Um, they're, they're, it's not large commercial vehicles. It's, it's pickup trucks. I think they have one, one truck that's a little bit larger, and I don't even know if that goes out every day. It's an approved use in the HC district. This, this lot is in the commercial highway district. It's not in a residential district. It, um, it is one lot away from the intersection with, with Route nine. It's, it's not a, a far distance into East Mountain Road North. Um, and I, in, I don't believe that the planning board could approve a plan that, that has access. You know, we don't, we don't have access through another parcel, and I don't think that you can approve a plan without us having access through another parcel. Um, and, um, I, I think that's addresses the traffic. Oh, oh, no, um, the, the entrance. We had to take part of the stone wall down to accommodate site distance to the east. It, it's, it's not a large section of the wall, and the, any part of the wall that we have to move that's along the right-of-way will be maybe five feet into the parcel. But we anticipate that we need to really just take down the corner of the wall, and then we'll be able to see, you know, the required site distance. And, um, you know, we want to disturb as little of the wall as possible because we do want to keep the nature of the road continuing to look the way that it does. We have widened the driveway. Um, that was something that was discussed at the site plan. We, it's, it's going from about twelve feet wide, and it'll be about eighteen feet wide. And that helps to have the ability of if, if a truck is leaving the site and so, and, and another truck is coming in, that they will block each other in the road. There are other ways to accommodate that and not widen the road, widen the driveway, but we widened the driveway in response to comments from the site plan. So that is something we could discuss whether or not, that, you know, the give and take of, of whether, you know, wider driveway is safer or a smaller driveway is more in characteristic of the existing, um, area. And I think unless anybody else has any other questions about the traffic, I think I've addressed those.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Let, I, Miss Frazenda, do you want to speak? I'll give you one more chance.
Yes, can you hear me now?
There you go. You have the floor, ma'am. You have the floor.
Hi, everyone, good evening. I just wanted to comment. Um, I mean, I have lived there for almost forty years. My husband has lived right in the property that were, that is in question right now for over forty-five years. Yeah, there's always been an increase in traffic every year because since I've been there in the past thirty-five years, there's been over thirty homes built up on East Mountain Road North, which has definitely increased traffic on that road from delivery. From delivery trucks, fuel delivery trucks, Amazon, UPS, FedEx, they all go up and down every day. Not to mention the fact that the school bus now goes up and down that road, which never did before. So there's always been an increase every year in traffic. As far as sitting at the bottom of the mountain of at. Intersection of Route nine waiting to pull out. Well, if there was a traffic light, you'd sit there for two or three minutes anyway if you had a red light waiting for it to change. That's the same as you would do now down at Fishkill Road and nine. So I just wanted to comment that I really don't see Nick having a business in there. As increasing any dramatic traffic flow that would affect down at the bottom of the nine. And if anybody's going to be affected by any trucks going in and out, it would be me living there, and I don't have a problem with it. That's what I wanted to comment on.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, all right, any other else from the public wishes to speak on Cedar Hill? I understand from Cheryl that the the room is now lost internet in Phillips Town and they're using a. Wi-Fi hotspot, so I'm not sure you guys can hear us. Can you maybe give me a thumbs up, Cheryl? Can you hear us?
We can hear you.
Hmm. Cheryl, can you hear me? Give me a thumbs up?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, great. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, great. Anyone else? Going once? Going twice? All right, can I have a motion to close the public hearing, please, for Cedar Hill?
So moved.
Thank you, Kim. Neil, second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Now, I I think there are uh some topics that have been raised. Um. I'm happy to engage for a little bit with the board to discuss. But I think there 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 is there is stuff to discuss, uh, given those comments, and I assume others have some views. Uh, so let me just open the floor to my fellow board members to raise any comments or uh concerns, if at all. And and Cheryl, you can, I think you can let Madeline and Bettina and James and Denise go at this point. Kim?
Well. So this is a. I I'm not sure that I that this was clear, but this is a highway commercial. Um. Zoning for this property and this property, I believe, um had a pre-existing commercial business there. Um, so. You know, I I. I don't really, I I don't see that it's a massive change.
Period?
Yeah, I mean, I it's it seems fairly straightforward, you know, it's small trucks and. You know, there's not a lot of. Building going on and. And I what I would like to ask about, I guess, is um whether Steve has um resolved the flag lot issue.
I consulted with Carl in regard to that. And um Carl and I have a. Difference of opinion in regard to the flag lot provision in the code. Uh, and whether it applies outside of um the open development subdivisions. Um, however, this lot is not within a subdivision, standalone, pre-existing lot. So Carl and I agree that the bulk.
I think you mean Steve, right? You mean um Greg? Greg Warner or?
Who did I say?
Carl.
That's all right.
Sorry, Frazenda popped up. It's gotta be. Yes, Greg Warner is is, of course, the building inspector, and that is who I consulted with, and that is who I I meant to discuss. I apologize for the mistake. Thank you for the correction, too, by the way.
Okay.
So uh, anyway, the point of it all is that the uh bulk cable requirements for the HC would apply to this lot, and I I don't think there's any question about that. Certainly, that's correct.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you for the question, Kim. Uh, Laura or uh Laura, anything you want to ask or raise?
Uh, yeah, just two things. So um I am a little concerned regarding um the. The two speakers regarding the uh. With regard to Hudson Highlands Reserve um and the amount of traffic that's going to be hitting that road. I don't know if we can. I guess my question is is that does one impact the other and vice versa? Because we have to look at it from the fact that like if both of them go ahead. It is a significant, potentially significant amount of potential traffic. Right? If you combine the two, but if you look at them independently, they may work independently, but if you look at them as both happening simultaneously. Like, you know, I I I don't know how else to say it, if that makes any sense. Yes, Kim.
But I thought that um at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that Hudson Highlands cannot use East Mountain Road. North. Except as an emergency. That that was off the table, using it for anything else, correct? Am I am I not correct?
I can address that. Yeah, that's correct. They're not proposing that as the access point. It's only. It's not part of the plan. It's not what's it's not what's proposed before the board. It's not even an alternative.
But I think Laura is Laura is asking a Route nine question, I think, as much as uh. Laura, I assume you're talking about just a general volume of traffic issue on Route nine point?
Yeah. Because I'm thinking through, right? So we have. We have the lot, which was, what is it, thirty-six twenty-two? Which is also on the table today, right? Then you have this. You have this, right, the DePaulis, and then right after that, you have Hudson Highland Hudson Highlands Reserve. So we're talking about three items that are like adjacent to one another that are all timing out simultaneously. Right? As a from a planning perspective, there is some question that I am actually raising, which is. As these come online, there will be an incremental and or potential exponential increase in traffic right at that. Section of Route nine. And should we be concerned?
So Laura, you and Heidi have raised this issue. I think we've mentioned it a couple of times. I'm going to ask Bob. Bob, I'm gonna put you on the spot for a minute. I'd like your help getting the planning board on the docket for. A town board meeting to raise the topic, which we've talked about a number of times. In fact, I think I brought this up in last meeting based about Ms. Oates's. Letter uh that we talk to the board, the town board, about what we're going to do about Route nine. Um. The whether e- each individual case has a legitimate standing to be approved, but we are reaching a point. And you can add to that Magazino's expansion. You can add to that our Shakespeare Festival further down. There are a number of projects. We certainly have CRS. We have our truck. Uh, parking area that we approved. I can't remember the name of it. Um, but there's been a material increase in the volume of activity that we are, as a board, approving. And I think Laura's raising again the question. So Bob, I I I'd like your help getting us on the agenda. For the town board meeting to talk about the proliferation of activities on Route nine and what we potentially could do. Uh, they could do as a board about the topic.
Sure, we can address that. We could try to get you on the agenda for next next month's meeting. Uh, I did bring this up last at our last meeting as well. I brought everyone was concerned about, and I also spoke to Steve Gabbah, our town attorney, about this. Um, I as I did mention, many years ago, the setbacks on Route nine were a hundred feet. They were changed quite some time ago, I think, to less than fifty, maybe like thirty-five. And the reason they the town did that back then is to try to prevent a four-lane highway coming through through Route nine. Again, um, if if. Route nine gets to that point, I'm sure the state will do what they want to do at that particular time. But sure, Neil, we can get you on the agenda next month to do to to address it with you.
Thank you. Laura, anything else you want to add? Okay. Any other board members in the room? Dennis or Neil, Peter, Heidi?
I'd like.
Dennis, please. Oh, Dennis, go ahead. I I the camera's only focusing on Dennis. I saw Dennis. Go ahead, Dennis.
Okay, I just wanted to comment on uh that site particularly. Uh, I've been up in the area for. Over forty years and seen some dramatic changes, believe me. But that site particularly has been used for that similar operation over the years. Uh, I don't see how dramatically this is going. This approval would affect what's coming out of that site, so. It it was very similar use o- over the years.
Thank you, Dex. Neil, Peter, or Heidi?
I think Heidi had something.
Yeah, I I'd like to say something. Um, so when CRS came forth. Yeah, okay. Okay. Uh, so shortly after I joined the board, I think the CRS International site came forward for approval by the board. And um. A number of residents that live, and that involved a lot of trucks and lar- very large trucks and. It and the traffic study done by um. Um, Beatty and Watson indicated, as they always do, that there would be no effects, no effects on traffic. Um, totally contradictory, in my opinion, to anything anybody driving Route nine experiences and um. So I voted against that that project and and one other member of the board did as well. Um, that was and that was based in part on residents saying that they literally could not come out of their. Their homes onto Route nine safely without being afraid. In the meantime, during the several years I've been on the board, every single project on Route nine has been approved. Not and every single project has received a traffic study that says that there's no effects. And yet, there has to be, we all know there are effects. So I would just say. That that is counterintuitive to the extreme. We know that there's effects on Route nine and. I don't know what we can do about it. I have read in the local papers. That other areas have restricted. Um, development along their major thoroughfares. Um, I'm happy to provide that information to, you know, I don't know whether. There's there's, you know. There way, there are ways a town can confront this type of issue. But I can just say that during the time I've been on the board, uh, which is only a couple of years. Every single time a project comes up on Route nine, there are going to be no traffic effects, and it's it just doesn't make sense. And I, again, I voted against CRS. That was the largest truck. Uh, project, big trucks coming in and out. Um, affecting traffic. It seems to me, from a common sense perspective, very heavily. And yet, the traffic study said no effects. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Heidi, very fair observations. Uh, and that's hence why I cited you in that vote in that discussion, because I think we had. We had similar things, which is why I think it's time for us to go uh to the town board. Uh, and discuss it. Uh, Peter, Neil, things you want to add?
I I would feel very much like Heidi does as well, so I'm not going to just repeat her words, but um. I uh I agree with there. I think they're all very sensible observations.
Thank you. Neil, anything to add?
No.
Kim, Kim, just hold on a second.
No, let let Neil go.
Yep, Neil, go ahead, please.
Um, it's a it's a it's comes down to a property right, comes down right to develop your own property, and um it's not going to. It's it's not going to be without its consequences. Um, Route nine is certainly busier. And, you know, get busier every year, the more we develop these properties, but it is Route nine. It's a commercial. Corridor. And I'm not sure we're ready to start picking and choosing who can develop and who can't. But maybe we can, I don't know, maybe we can find. Find some other way to deal with it. Maybe the town board will have some ideas, but um it's a difficult, difficult question. Sometimes you run into this and it's it's just tricky. It's just, it's not an easy solution. So thanks. Thank you.
And did you have something you want to say?
Yeah, I agree with Neil. You know, I the thing is, you know, what are we going to do? We're going to say. Um, oh, I'm sorry, you aren't in Phillips, you know, like the traffic. Doesn't just come from Phillips Town. No, Route nine, like it or not, is the only north-south truck route between here and six eighty-four on this side of the river. You know, if they open the Teconic up the trucks. You know, maybe things would get better, but I I think I agree with Neil that. I I don't think that the traffic. Problem is necessarily local. The traffic problem is the fact that Route nine is a major artery. You know, and are we gonna, you know, put a traffic light at Fishkill that says you can't come in if you don't live in Phillips Town? I mean, it just, I don't understand. I really don't.
All right. Uh, so look, I I'm I'm gauging the sentiment of the board. At this point, we would typically uh. Ask Ron to prepare resolutions for the next board meeting. I'd like to gauge the sentiment of the board about whether we're ready for that or whether we'd like to continue this conversation in the next board meeting. So let me just see if we can get a motion to prepare resolutions.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all right, any discussion?
We need the Teconic to be a commercial.
Well, that's.
A razor on the bridges.
Well, that's we're going, I want to go before the town board, not the state of New York.
That we're not talking about. These projects are here in Phillips Town. I I disagree. I I really disagree.
Heidi, you disagree with which? Hold on, hold on. Heidi, you disagree with which point?
What's that?
You disagree with what point?
That the traffic has nothing to do with projects being approved in Phillips Town. We're approving, we're asked to approve or disapprove. Projects that are being put before us that are located in Phillips Town on Route nine. That is our responsibility. And residents are literally telling us, I'm afraid to come out of my house onto Route nine. I'm afraid I'll be killed. We are, we have heard testimony to that effect. But with CRS, we actually heard residents say, I am afraid to come out of my property. Uh, it was a, I believe it was a a um. A park, a trailer park on Route nine. I'm afraid to come out because I'm afraid that I'll be hit. I have to wait for a long period of time to come out onto Route nine. Please help me. That's what we've heard.
Steve, this may be a good time to bring you into this because I I think we're discussing. Levels of control or decision rights that different bodies have. And I know Kim was obviously being funny about the Teconic. Let's leave that that state state DOT point aside. But what is this board, especially when we're presented with traffic studies by reputable firms? I'd say John Canning, as far as I can tell. Is a reputable executive who does reputable analysis. We're presented with reputable studies that say. Something that is contrary to what what Heidi is saying, and she's absolutely right, that the public is telling us. What is our degrees of freedom as a planning board versus the town board, for example, in this case?
Well, what you're talking about is cumulative impacts. You're not talking about traffic impacts of one project. You certainly aren't talking about traffic impacts of this project. This is just a. Build one garage on an existing landscaping facility. So I mean, you've gotten a little bit sideways on this. But um when you go through SECRE review on any project, even this one. You can um and and do review cumulative impacts from other proposed projects. So if there's a project in Phillips Town, if there's a project in Fishkill, if there's a project. I don't know, valid, whatever it is that you think might might impact you that you know of, or you can look into, find out if it's there, you can consider. In approving the application before you, not only the traffic impacts of that project, but what the cumulative. Impacts of all these other proposed projects will be. Now, and and it's my understanding we've done that, and see, I defer to Ron, but I'm I'm quite certain that that's that's something that's gone into our calculation, you know, of the planning board's calculation, I should say. In approving CRS and every other project that that's been approved before it, when it conducted its SECRE review. Now, outside of SECRE review. You do not have very much um discretion in terms of considering cumulative impacts of other projects. You have to go by the site plan regulations in the code, and those have limitations on what it is you can consider. In approving site plan in regard to traffic. It's mostly site-specific considerations. If there's a remedy, if you will, for this, it lies with town board. The town board will have to look into what the appropriate zoning is. Doesn't mean that you have to make all of Route nine residential. You can keep it commercial. But it would be uses that are of a less um traffic. Frequency that that you would allow, things with fewer vehicle trips. If that's the way the town board wants to go, you know you have one. You're working on a new. Comprehensive plan, and that's going to dictate a lot as far as what the zoning is along there. So these are legitimate concerns. But I don't know that this particular application is the one to uh dwell on it. This is the type of thing you might want to have a discussion with the town board over. Um, rather than than deal with tonight.
Uh, Steve, I would I would just, I would ask you just to amend your language. I don't think we've gotten sideways. I think we're having an important conversation, and this is this is. This is another example, albeit a small. I think we're having an important conversation and this is, this is, this is another example, albeit a small one, where the board, some members of the board feel passionate about the topic. So I, 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 I want to encourage people to have these conversations because it is important. And there's cumulative effects, well, this is the accumulation of effect of a number of projects. So whether we're sideways on this or not, I think we're on the right track and we're supposed to talk about these things. So um, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded to prepare resolutions. That does not mean we, we will vote on them in the next meeting, so people can spend their time in the next month thinking about them and how they feel, but we have a motion and it's been seconded. I'm going to call the vote, to have a vote in favor of preparing, uh, directing Ron to prepare resolutions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, Ron, you're, you're directed as such, thank you, sir. A good discussion. And, and Bob, um, I don't think we need to take a vote as a board to ask you to get us on the, the docket. But I, but um, I think you've, you've heard the sentiment. And then, once we get on the calendar, we as a group of seven can discuss how we then want to go before the planning board, the, the town board, whether as a group or a select group or something. So we'll cross that, that bridge when we get there.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, I, I apologize, I must have missed it in my notes. Was there a vote to close the public hearing?
Uh, I thought we did have a vote.
You, you may very well have, I just, I don't have it.
Cheryl, did we?
I wanted to make sure.
I'm not sure we did.
All right, well, let's, let's do it, let's, let's do it again if we did. Anyway, can I have a motion, thank you, Steve. Uh, motion to close the public hearing, Kim first, second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, thank you. Our Steve, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow. Ron, yours directed as earlier. Okay, we're going to go to our third public hearing. I'm going to just make a comment that I was said privately to the two applicants, uh, to Hunt Potter uh, on Moog Road and to um, the Hudson Valley Reserve that is returning to us. It is a strong possibility that we will not get to you this evening. And I, I, I know that Cheryl conveyed that expectation when we put the agenda together. As far as I can tell, we have ninety-four members of the public uh, listening to us. I don't know how many want to speak. After Cheryl reads the um, intro, I'll give the, the ground rules for this uh, third uh, uh, public hearing, the second continuation, uh, to help, I think, keep us, keep us moving forward. But I just want to again, repeat for uh, the Hunt Potter and Hudson Valley Reserve, there's a strong possibility we will not get to you this evening. Uh, and if that is the case, we will put you first in the docket for next month's meeting, which I think we've attempted to do for all of these situations, uh, as we've been working at a high operating tempo over several months. Uh, Cheryl, over to you to read the, the abbreviated version of the public notice.
The planning board of the town of Phillips Town, New York, will hold a continuation of the public hearing regarding review under the State Environmental Quality Review Act of the below-described project on Thursday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at their regular monthly meeting, starting at seven thirty PM at the Phillips Towne Town Hall and virtually via Zoom to consider the following application. Garrison Golf Club PDD slash Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival two thousand fifteen Route Nine Garrison, New York, one oh five two four, tax map number six zero point dash one dash five nine point two and five nine point three. Secret review of major site plan and three-lot subdivision modifications to the GGC PDD to permit relocation of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to the new site, new theaters, outdoor pavilion, and housing for artists and visitors, existing banquet restaurant facility to remain. Dated at Phillips Town, New York, the sixteenth day of December, twenty twenty-one. Neil Zucker.
Sure, thank you, Cheryl, thank you. So let me just repeat some ground rules. Um, first, and I've used this phrase now a couple of times in these meetings. I speak for the board when I say, I hope it's fair for you, my fellow board members, that there is no one in this board that is opposed to the spiritual mission of the Shakespeare Festival. We are all fans, to greater or lesser extent, of the bard himself and his work, and certainly the, the social good that the Shakespeare Festival creates. We are not discussing, we're not discussing the social value of, of the Shakespeare Festival's move. We're not discussing whether we like plays, tragedies, comedies, or the like. We are not discussing those topics. What we are discussing is the environmental impact of the proposal. And that is what we are asking for public comment on. That is what we are expecting folks to speak on. Who is speaking tonight? For those of you who have not spoken before, we will continue our highly transparent and open approach of allowing people to speak as long as they need to speak, uh, as long as they try to hew to the topic at hand, which is the environmental impact. If you have spoken before, we will allow a repeat. That repeat speaker must be a topic, talking about something that is new to their commentary and with a three-minute timeline. I will repeat that again, new to their original commentary and a three-minute timeline. So that is the per, the parameters upon which you speak tonight. Cheryl has an extraordinary memory, she knows if you spoke already. So let's not try to sneak it in. Uh, and I know there's a couple of people who are, I suspect, have already spoken, but want to read a letter uh, from some other third party. If you've already spoken, even if you're reading a letter from someone else, that is the same thing. You get three minutes, give us the highlights from Hamlet, pun intended. Uh, uh, so that's what you'll have to speak on, you get your three minutes. If you've already spoken, even if you're reading a letter from someone else. So that's the plan. Uh, what we did last time was we went, we did fifteen minutes in the room, fifteen minutes on Zoom and back and forth. So Neil Toman, I'll, I'll, I'll ask you to be the um, organizer of the, in the room. Um, and then we'll go to Zoom and back and forth and back and forth. And we're going to do this until uh, ten o'clock, that's an hour and a half from now. And um, that will be our plan. I'll say one more thing before we get started. As I said at the um, site visit uh, two weeks ago, I said at the previous meeting here, and I think was fairly captured in, in the Putnam County News and Recorder's review of that site visit. When we, I, when we closed the public hearing, that next month, if we close it tonight, the next month, uh, Shakespeare's uh, um, uh, supporter, uh, not Spurs, um, staff and, and, and uh, folks have agreed to take the questions that we'll curate for them from all the public's comments and help uh, respond to them in the next meeting. We'll give them a chunk of time to do that. So that's the plan. Uh, Kate Lieberman, uh, you, uh, uh, we're not asking you guys to speak. I don't know if you need to be a panelist uh, to, to, to hear the commentary, but we're listening to the public at this point. So I'm not, I don't, I don't know if it's necessary for you to be added as a panelist because we're not coming to the, the representatives to speak at this point. Um, all right, so Neil Toman, over to you for uh, first set of speakers.
Looking for um, Rhonda Donahue first, and we've got Nancy Fagan, you're on deck. Microphone.
Hello? I feel like I just got my tickets to Stephen Colbert. I've been watching y'all on TV for fifteen or sixteen months. Thank you for everything you do. Um, I'm just going to put these here. Um, when I started following this project, oh no, oh good. I used from the very first EAF, which the fabulous Cheryl Rocket helps me find over and over again. Um, this document, which is called Appendix C. And it is the proposed development uh, put side by side with the existing development, which is called the two thousand and five PDD, which means Plan Development District. So this is the two thousand and five, and this is the proposed, and they run side by side like this through the duration of this twenty-seven pages. And so I thought a valuable tool in evaluating the project would be to take the subsequent versions of the EAF, and now we have the final EAF of two thousand twenty-two, I guess we're in now, and compare it to two thousand and five. So I filled out a Freedom of Information Act, trying to find the EAFs from two thousand and five, which were not digitized. Five hours and three visits to Town Hall later, no EAFs, but I do have some environmental impact segments. Um, you all may be interested to know that the two thousand and five action, which I think dirt was moved on around ten acres of land, and the total amount of land, you know, structures created was three point nine acres, received a positive declaration from the planning board. And so I also, because the chair requested uh, at the last hearing, have changed my whole remarks to ask new questions about environmental issues related to that. So I'm not an expert and I'm not an attorney. I'm just a person who reads documents, old and new. Okay. So my first question is, how can a project that is disturbing, I'm sorry, there's two numbers, forty-five and forty-nine acres, I don't know which is right, of land at the same intersection of bodies of water called the watershed of Phillips Brook, which drains into the Constitution Marsh, which drains into the Hudson River, anything other than a positive deck after seventeen years more of pollution on the same golf course? So that's like my overriding thing. Okay. So um, what I'm going to talk about, uh, like my uh, friend, uh, Mr. Davis, who hired a soil consultant, um, is the soil analysis because that's really important when you're doing construction on a golf course. Um, okay, so on the golf course, uh, in addition to pesticides that are used now, the dirt contains heavy metals that include mercury, lead, arsenic, and chromium, DDT, DDE, and DDD, which was banned in nineteen sixty-two, three ti- three kinds of chlorodine, which were banned in eighty-eight, and then a chemical, I can't even say, that was also banned in the eighties. Okay, so because there's danger in the dirt, that is going to be disturbed. To make a parking lot, to build a building, to make a wildflower meadow, it's going to be disturbed. Um, that, that's kind of freaking me out, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, can everybody turn off their cell phones, please?
Thank you. Geo design, which was the expert who did the soil study, said that, yes, these substances are harmful when the dirt is disturbed. So all the stuff that's in the dirt comes into the air. So my next question for the board is, um, I couldn't find information addressing that issue. So what is the plan for containing the dust from construction or any gardening, any activity to protect the humans, including the workers, and the other species that are going to be breathing in that air? And then sequentially, uh, it's going to rain on that same dirt. It's impossible to get the dirt covered every single night. So that rain falls, it goes into Phillips Brook and, or the New York City Aqueduct, which is right there. And what are the plans for stormwater runoff? The um, five-year process that resulted in the two thousand and five law, um, so that was about nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and five, I found lots of papers and correspondence. Um, a great deal of that activity was about this particular issue, stormwater runoff. Because of the steep slope, um, you know, the golf course building is up here. It goes down the driving range, and then of course, down, 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 until we get wherever the river is that way. Okay, so um, the chemicals that were found in the soil were not found in the well water at the golf course or in water sources, which is great. However, there's no indication that the dirt at the bot- the sediment, at the bottom of the wells or the water sup- sources was tested. So I'd like to ask the board to please ensure that that was tested because anything that creates turbulence is going to put those chemicals into the water. Um, thank you. Okay, the environmental impact form from the two thousand and five action also used a lot of computer modeling to do the stormwater runoff and stuff. And I know that um, Shakespeare has done similar things for their plans for stormwater runoff. However, um, none of us, it hasn't escaped any of us that the storms that have occurred in the seventeen years between oh five and twenty-two are different than the ones that we used to have. Um, so that, if you could please carefully review the stormwater runoff situation for the changing climate. Um, okay, the EAF part three that I'm referring to, I just have to give myself a buy here. It's dated September of twenty twenty-one. However, uh, there was a subsequent series of documents uploaded to the website. They are comments on that EAF, and in some cases, they change the facts. But there isn't a final, a thief with all the facts integrated into it so that a member of the public can just look at what the current EAF is or the final EAF and go, okay. So I can look at this, I can look at the first one, I can see what's changed, I can see what they worked on, I can see what's missing. That's not available. I would really appreciate it if the board could ask the applicant to create a nice, clean document. And I have a second part to my request. Right now, part three of the final EAF is eleven hundred and sixty-seven pages long. That includes some beautiful drawings. This isn't very easily loaded onto a computer in a person's home. And to try to pin out a, print out a page from that is extremely difficult. Prior EAFs were individual, the words, you know, just the typing was separate from the drawings. And that was a lot more easy for the public to manipulate. And now that so much work has been done by the applicant and so many consultants have been involved, it would be really helpful if it could be uploaded in ways that are easy for the fabulous Cheryl Rocket to label and easy for the public to find. That would be really great. I get a lot of emails asking me where to find things, it's hard. So thank you. Um, okay, so that's kind of a transparency thing. Let me go back to my questions. All right, now, the one item I, the event I missed related to this project was the site visit, um, I think that was last Sunday or two Sundays ago. I had a family obligation. And I wanted to also ask the board, sorry, this is unreasonable, if there could be a report from that site visit. It was really important because that bridge was not a part of the project when it was introduced. And when the traffic study was done in twenty twenty, there was no Snake Hill Bridge. And I don't even know if it's the main entrance to the proposed development or not, and don't know anybody who does. Um, so it would, sorry, I know it's a hassle, but you know, the chairman did outline the processes that he was going to follow. It was a very important meeting. The newspaper covered it pretty well, but I still have people talking to me on the phone saying, well, excuse me, this happened and that happened, and why don't you know this or that? So if we could have any kind of notes or anything from it, that would be really helpful, thank you. Um, if there was information about the bridge in the EAF, I would just go to that, but there's not a lot, there's some drawings. Okay, and photographs. All right, now, one of the issues that comes up in the two thousand and five correspondence between the DEC and Mr. Glennon Watson, who once again is representing the applicant, is a lot of conversation about um, stormwater runoff, as I mentioned, but also a very specific thing called concrete leachate. Okay, I am not a concrete expert, but I have to assume that this is what comes off of concrete when it either hits water, dirt, chemicals, not too sure. However, I do believe from the talk from the site visit that the supports to the Snake Hill Bridge will be made of concrete and that no one at the site visit that day could explain to the board exactly how much concrete would be used. Um, I think numbers between fifty and a hundred tons, I think, were uh, but that's a big range. And from an environmental perspective, concrete leachate is an issue. So uh, may the public please see specifications for the proposed new bridge, sightlines, elevations, concrete, and how the concrete leachate will be prevented because those supports are going in, around, or wherever the unnamed stream, the DEC calls it the unnamed stream that flows into the Phillips Brook, that flows into the Hudson River. So this is a, a, you know, another pollutant not found in the soil, but found in a concrete. Okay, and then it appears, because the supports are concrete, that we're going to need, um, if we could please see leachate mitigation plans, and also for any other areas in which concrete leachate- and also for any other areas in which concrete leachate is an issue, like foundations near slopes, you know, just places where water and concrete mix, and then that goes into the whole soup. Okay. And I also am going to second Mr. Davis's request of the last hearing to ask the board to expand soil sampling across the area to be excavated. The testimony of the expert, whose name has escaped me, and I could dig and find it, but you all know who I'm talking about, felt that the soil testing was inadequate. It was about sixteen samples, and this is a forty-five plus or minus acre project. They did include teas and greens, which is really important for pollution on a golf course. But it is not adequate, nor were they deep enough, too shallow and too few. Given that the bridge has been added, have the wetlands and watercourses on the project been studied again to include the potential sedimentation during the construction and operation of the Snake Hill Bridge? What are the impacts of the construction and use of the Snake Hill Bridge in terms of disturbance to wetlands and watercourses? And finally, what are the impacts of the changes in the groundwater levels on the wetlands during the construction and use of the Snake Hill Bridge? Wetlands are extremely important environmental resources, as you all know, and these are issues that have been addressed vis-à-vis other aspects of the project, but not the proposed bridge. Okay. Turning now to other matters that require further investigation after the positive declaration in two thousand and five, the environmental impact statement, which is in my red briefcase along with the bat phone, says that it was important to define what extraordinary events might take place on the proposed project if it were approved that would cause the owner of the, you know, the project will switch hands from Mr. Davis to Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. What level of event has, do they need to come and speak with all of you or to Supervisor Van Tassel? And this is really important, because just this week, Mr. Van Tassel opined on permits needed or declined for a, I'm sorry, I don't know the really accurate word, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but a pirate-themed festival at Graymore, you know, sorry. Okay, whatever, you all know what I'm talking about, right? Okay, got it. Okay, so this is an environmental question, let me just get there. So given that this is going to be a very large entertainment venue, this section may have been overlooked. In any case, I can't find anything written about it on philipstown.com. Okay, so can the applicant hold any event on the property should the project be approved? Can the property be rented out to anyone for any purpose should the application be approved? Or is the town of Philipstown going to put requirements like they did in the two thousand and five PDD for times when the property owner would need to come to Philipstown government and say, hey, we'd like to have, you know, a Renaissance fair. You know, what are the rules for that? I don't know. Thank you. And of course, if these issues are not discussed, this could be a huge environmental issue. This would affect the light study, the noise study, the traffic study, the emergency services. I mean, it would affect every single thing that's already been done if these kinds of events were to take place without the town government being involved. Okay, so, that was scary. Okay. I just wanted to say that in the environmental impact statement for the project that was approved, that exists now, and, oh man, did I get up here with it? Sorry, I'm nervous. Okay, so I have teeny pictures, but this is the existing site, five things. That's what we got going on up there. And of course, I'm not counting the, like, cart barn in the tiny parking lot, but, you know, it's not a big development. But in the environmental impact statement, the applicant in two thousand and five was able to say, yes, it fits into the rural character of the town. Yes, it adds recreation opportunities. Yes, it provides a place for people to meet and gather. The chair's daughter's bat mitzvah was held there. When we sent off the Reverend Frank Gier from St. Phillips, the gathering was there. It worked. It was a good thing. I do have one last question, a small one, probably just an error. But on the proposed concept plan, so this is the one from long ago, the five dots. This one is the twenty-three dots. And on the, but on the twenty-three dots, there's two number fifteens. There's a fifteen down here on Phillips Brook Road, and then there's a fifteen where the current clubhouse, you know, small inn restaurant letting places. And they both say fifteen means twenty-room hotel. We're just making sure that there's not two twenty-room hotels. I think probably not, but just checking. Okay, so finally, Chairman Zuckerman explained at the site visit the plan going forward, that this hearing would take place, and then that all of you would gather our many questions. Thank you. Not an easy job. So to that end, some people, some in this room and some at home on Zoom, created these documents of questions from the community. And so I have a couple of documents of those, one from the last hearing and one from this hearing. And I also wanted to submit to the public record the local law, local law number six for two thousand and five. I got this by calling the New York Department of State. It's nice to have, you can read it, you understand what's going on, how they approve the development that's there now, what restrictions were put on it, how it is zoned, and I know that some of the things that I've said have to do with zoning, but I'm not too good on zoning. And I think it would be great if people could go to philipstown.com and look at this law. So that's why I'm going to hand in these documents to, thank you.
Put them on the record. Next up, we have Nancy Fagan, followed by Randy Davis. That's quite right. We know you're struggling with technology, Glenn.
Yeah, hi. This is kind of high. Can I move it? I don't know, how does it work? That's better. I haven't used one of these in a while. Hi, I'm Nancy Fagan. I live on Phillips Brook Road, which, I'm not going to be as lengthy as Rhonda. Another person who brings up all sorts of things I hadn't thought of. But I'm probably one of the people who's most, could be most affected, because I am literally right off of where they did a lot of work when the hotel was going to be built back in two thousand and five. And I don't know if you all know, but it's, I'll just make an aside here. I, it's funny how the things that I'm going to mention aren't things that I thought of back in two thousand and five, because I had, I had friends and they said, don't worry, this will never be built. It's sort of funny to think now, here we are in two thousand and twenty-two, and you know, we're just kind of, you know, now we have a bigger thing to worry about. But so I have, I have issues with, that came up with the, I don't know how many, for anybody who was at the meeting four weeks ago, there were some issues that came up by some of my neighbors and another person that I just want to mention to the board that really have to be addressed, because it's, it's something that I can't really research too much. Now, one was a neighbor mentioned about the, okay, so the two issues are ground, the groundwater and you know, what that effect could be. I mean, this is a really serious kind of issue. And there was a neighbor who mentioned at that other meeting that when they were doing some irrigation wells, they literally had to go down two hundred feet. That's just something, you know, there's just things that just need to be looked at, because what, what effect is this going to have? And the other person was, was Howard Davis, who was an environmental lawyer who spoke. Now, this is a person who, I gather, this is his area, so I'm trusting him, because these are, these are complex issues. This whole idea of the effect on the water is, I'm not even sure how it's researched. But anyway, I think you should look into some things that he mentioned. He mentioned that you should do a definitely research as much as you can, the effect of the groundwater on neighbors, all of my neighbors who are in the real near vicinity. Because that's just, this is kind of scary. And he mentioned a seventy-two-hour well pump test in late summer. Now, I don't know exactly what, you know, I was trying to take notes of what he said, but I would implore you to look at everything that he mentioned at the last meeting, because he seemed to be somebody who has really had a chance to look at this. He knows what to look for, so I don't know, maybe this is another person that we we need to bring in some experts in this area, because I tell you, I'm more, I'm much more concerned with the, you know, the, what's going on underground than I am with what's going on with, with the air, you know, should the soil be disturbed? With all due respect, I don't know about that so much. So that's just some things I'd like to look at. So I won't, I won't go into a lot of all the other issues that were mentioned in the last couple of meetings on this with all my neighbor, all the things my neighbors mentioned, you know, I just want to, I don't want to bring up all those again, but a lot of, you know, people, us people who are really going to be affected by it, where we are very concerned. Just as an aside, I thought, there's also, it's interesting to think about unintended consequences of these kind of things. Maybe you don't, what's happened already is that the Hudson Land Trust has already put up signs off of Phillips Brook and see, this is, this is, the green areas is where the land trust has taken over. This is Snake Hill. And it's just interesting how, I'm thinking of the future. I mean, people have always sort of parked there to do certain things, whatever they do. Some people go and look for golf balls, I don't know. But I don't know if any of you know, but there's not much parking. It's literally almost very negligible parking. These little black things I've mentioned are the only parking spots between Phillips Brook and off of Snake Hill. And it's just going to be interesting to think about. This has not, not much to do with the Shakespeare Fest, which is an interesting aside about the fact that sometimes we don't think about what's going to happen in the future, about, you know, is this going to be a big draw, where the Hudson Land Trust is taking over? I have no idea. I mean, it's walking trails or whatever it's going to turn into, I don't know. It's just going to be interesting to watch, and I think it's just going to be something that if, if for some reason it becomes really popular and there's not a lot of place for cars to be put, it could be, could be a problem in the future. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy Davis, followed by Grady Oaks. Right. And if we could keep your comments to, we're trying to have non-repetitive comments, let's say.
Well, I prepared this for quite some time, and I really appreciate the fact that I finally get to speak tonight. So thank you, planning board, for the opportunity to speak and to be considered in this process. And thank you to the, all of the community for listening. Good evening. My name is Randy Davis. Our family has lovingly lived in Garrison for more than eighteen years. Actually, my parents brought my family here fifty years ago. We raised our children through the Garrison School, the broader Philipstown community, and through the many assets that this area has to offer. Many both in and out of this community have commented on and advocated for the potential benefits that this proposed plan development may bring. However, reading the secret handbook, which I did, chapter four on determining significance, there is a question and answer provision that has informed my understanding as to where we are in this process. The question, may an action with one or more significant adverse environmental impacts receive a negative declaration if there are balancing social and economic benefits? The answer provided in the handbook is no. The determination of significance is a threshold determination that should not balance benefits against harm, but rather should consider whether a proposal has any probable significant adverse impact. Such balancing may only be done in findings following an environmental impact statement. As there have been potential significant impacts identified, I advocate for a positive declaration to be prepared to enable further assessment before balancing can be done. I'd like to speak now to some impactful areas that are concerning and identify some that have yet to be discussed, as you have requested. Towns and communities change. They shift and they evolve over time and predicated on need. We have come to learn that the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival had a need to find a new location for their summer performances. We've also learned that the owner of the Garrison Golf Course property had a need to find a new owner for the property and manage it with a shared vision and desire to keep conservation and good stewardship at heart. The EAF has shown that there are significant provisions and alterations that are necessary to meet these needs. It appears, however, there is another need that this proposed development is aiming to fulfill. The need to provide alternative open space for recreation for the many visitors and tourists who have found their way to the public parks in this beautiful area of the Hudson Valley. This need and intent is referenced by the applicant's grant proposals, by the language used for marketing and other published materials. And to support this, I'd like to read an excerpt from the applicant's submission for grants from the New York State Consolidated Funding Application. I quote, "Upon completion, our new campus will offer the public a much-needed new option for recreation and enjoyment of open space in a region that attracts tens of millions of tourists annually. The overcrowding of regional parks and trails is a double-edged sword that so many people are seeking spots for walking, hiking, and bicycling is a great driver of positive recreation and tourism effects. But it also poses the problems of environmental impacts, crowded roadways, congested trails, and other safety hazards. Moreover, many of the Hudson River's most beautiful vantage points are accessed via difficult, steep, or rocky trails. Our project will alleviate these concerns by offering a new, sustainably-developed and maintained Hudson River access point that will help to ease the area's congestion problem, as well as delight recreational visitors with accessible spectacular vistas seen from our property's high ridge lines." End quote. "If the intent is to invite and expect large numbers of visitors and the property will include performance venues, restaurants, bars, lodging, walking, and hiking trails, then we can expect it will likely meet its goals, and it will be significant in many ways. And while the language used seems clear as to the intent, it is not currently clear as to the projections for the significant numbers of people that could be visiting this property. So beyond the parking spaces allotted in the plan, beyond the number of proposed seats in the theaters and lodging and restaurant capacity, there is language that suggests that visitors may also be bussed and/or shuttled to the property from other parking facilities and to and from other attractions in our area. So while we are considering the potential impacts from the number of..." So while we are considering the potential impacts from the number of theater goers, the hotel guests and catered events and the continued passive use by our community of residents, we must also consider the potential for impact from the proposed use by many more than that. The EAF does not appear to include those projections. Although it is stated on the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival website that it is not intended as a public park, the language and messaging suggests otherwise. It also indicates on the website that the new owners reserve the right to responsibly manage access to prevent overuse. But currently, there is no understanding of what the restrictions and protections are being considered and that may be put in place to accomplish this or how they may be enforced. It's also unclear as to who will be responsible for parks and recreation management. Again, I advocate for a positive declaration. So all of these issues may be considered at this time in the process. I would like to speak to other specific concerns and potential impacts on the lives of valued community members. That is after all why we are here and what this process is for. On the subject of traffic, I am not alone when I say that I fear the approach to the anxiety producing merge that exists on Route nine northbound just before the proposed traffic light at the intersection of Travis and Snake Hill. With this new proposed traffic light, I am very concerned about the abrupt stop, the visibility and the sightlines and what will happen when people are racing at that one point to pass and then have to stop. To access the homes in our area of Garrison when traveling Route nine, our community's outlet is Coleman Road. Coleman, if you don't know, is almost directly across from the proposed main entrance for the campus property. As it stands now, we wait, we wait until it is safe to cut across highway traffic to turn southbound. I ask, what will occur when cars are lined up from both the north and the south on Route nine for the campus entrance? There is no proposed traffic light there. How will we safely get in and out to our homes and how will it impact the wait time to do so? I ask, how will we protect the small rural roads that serve our community from being used as through roads? And what impact will ensue when we begin to see the V that is formed where Coleman meets Frazier? Potentially becoming a U-turn for Route nine? So without further assessment, there is serious concern as to the impacts this will cause. Nine D, when coming from nine D, our ingress is Snake Hill Road, where we then jump onto Phillips Brook from a significant curve in Snake Hill. This blind curve already poses a problem and I can find no assessment as to the effect of increased use and additional traffic for this particular situation. There is a significant community of residents that traverse these roads and use these intersections and therefore vitally important that a more comprehensive traffic study be required. We are also concerned about the acoustics and how it may impact the neighboring community. The applicant has stated that the sound output data collected from performances from years past is being used for acoustic assessment and that there never were any complaints of noise from the neighbors of the Basque Bell property. Whether verifiable or not, this cannot be the basis for determining what could be. The property here in Garrison is significantly different from the grounds of Basque Bell. The terrain is different. The placement of roads and residential homes surrounding it is different. And the proposed structures and uses for the new property may present challenges where audible events may now occur. In fact, several years ago, when the restaurant at the Garrison hosted a Thursday night barbecue series with live music, we could listen to it from our own backyard. As others in our community have echoed, sound really travels in our area. To the extent that acoustical testing has been reported in the EAF, there appears to have been no testing done for off site impact. An important area that I have not discussed, or I have not heard discussed, excuse me, is our community's Garrison School Forest. The proposal indicates that there will be a system of paths and trails provided for walking and hiking the property and beyond. Primary and secondary paths, some with boardwalks over wetlands, some proposed to connect towards the historic trails of the north and south redoubts. The Garrison School Forest connects to these same trails. Right now, there are a handful of parking spots that make it possible to access these trails and therefore limits the overuse of this community resource. With ample parking proposed for the development, many ride on Snake Hill Road and the suggestion of buses and shuttles to the property, it could very well enable easy public access and potential overuse of these historical lands and trails and importantly, our Garrison School Forest. The forest was gifted to the Garrison School years ago for education and recreation purposes. And it is critical that if the connectivity to the proposed development could potentially impact this area, it must remain a safe, protected resource for our schoolchildren and our community. In closing, things that could go wrong are not always fixable. And those who may be in the position to try to fix may not always be in that position. So given the opportunity that this process provides for us to fully assess the significant environmental impacts that may occur and what issues might present as problems, we must take the time to identify, assess and address them before they're out of anyone's control to do so. A positive declaration would help to make sure this proposed planned development is appropriately planned with the protections we need for our community and for the applicant. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
We'll go with, we're going to go to Grady Oaks and then we're going to go to the Zoom meeting or to the Zoom callers.
Hi, thank you. Appreciate it. And appreciate the thoughtfulness through the exercise. Full disclosure, I've lived here three years, which makes me barely qualified to have an opinion about how much money we should be spending on our dirt roads, you know, so I'm, I'm pro dirt road, I guess. Like that's something that needs to be understood. I do appreciate the conversation about the cumulative impact of all the development that's happening. I think that's really important. There's a lot of, you know, death by a thousand cuts type, type stuff that's coming on through the development. I, I, I think about it. I'll be honest, I moved here in part because I had friends that lived on the post road. I live on the post road about a mile from the project. And one of the big draws was the golf course. I love to play golf. I've played golf there with my father for 15 years, like, and I know that that's, that's a bias for me. It's a, it's a special place. I go there with my friends Saturday, Sunday morning at 7:00 AM and I look across the river and I look at Storm King and it's a beautiful, special place. It's, it's important. I understand why the Shakespeare Festival wants to be there. I, I have, it's hard for me to get riled up about what's going to happen 30 years from now or 20 years from now. I realize this is a huge comprehensive plan. But I do think that there's one thing that is really irksome and I know people have talked about it before, but even this week I went and, and I walked, I walked the golf course with my daughter. She found 62 golf balls, which is pretty impressive. They do all live in her bathtub right now, so they'll get clean eventually, but the, the location of the tent on the 11th fairway. If you look at the state, you know, the state talks about scenic areas statewide significance, right? And this is one of those areas. It's important. And they talk about how you evaluate the environmental impact of a change to a view and to a view shed. And this town has advocated that that is a view shed that is important, that as you go north and you look west across nine, that this is a special place. And everyone here knows that when you drive up nine, you know, and you're looking into the woods, you know, and they look different based on the time of year. Or if you drive south down nine and you're looking at gravel pits or whatever, but you hit a moment where there's this open space where you see the golf course and you can look across the river and you can see the other side, right? And it's really beautiful and it's gorgeous. And I think everyone here who's driven that road has seen the sunset at a moment in time and they know how special that is, right? And what, what that feels like. And to me, the concept of putting a tent, a permanent structure on the top of 11 is embarrassing. And it's embarrassing to me that the community and where we have a town plan where we talk about that this is an important view shed and something that is important to us. It's disappointing to me that that's something that we would consider. If you go there, you can move the tent down, you can put the tent on 10, you can put the tent even lower, closer to where the old driving range would be. You can have it off of the ridge line so that people can see it. I personally have had good conversations with the Shakespeare Festival. I find that they, um, they have a goal. They've been given a gift. They want to build something. I do think that they want to be good stewards. They're ambitious. I understand what it is. I'm grateful that Mr. Davis ran the golf course for a while and I understand like his legacy of finding good steward for it. But when you think about what it could be and what it will be for the next few decades, protect the ridge. It's not okay. There's other alternatives. I think that there's a possibility that you can approve the project, but you cannot approve the location of that tent and that you can protect that view. And there are plenty of sites where it can happen. It is natural for them to build it on 10. It is natural them to build it even a little bit lower, like where one would be. If you know the old golf course, there are spots where it would not be something that you would see when you're going north on nine, which again is something that this community through the planning has decided is important to them that that view shed looking across the river is special. We've heard people talk about how building something in the shadow of, of Storm King, you know, kind of irks them, but, but when you read the stuff about this, the state assessments on scenic, scenic spots, they talk about how new structures there, that it is not arbitrary, that they should not be incongruous with the area. And there's an inventory of properties that they say like, these are noteworthy and these are okay. They talk about the Osborne House. They talk about West Point, that these are things that are special and contribute to the character of the area. And I suggest that no matter how much the board advocates for the value of the bard, that a tent on top of that ridge is not something that shares the same historical value of the Osborne's home nor of West Point, and it shouldn't be considered is, is something that should be, I think you should move the tent.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. We going to Zoom calls?
Yeah, thanks Neil. All right. Let's do Susie Gilbert first, followed by Charlie Dupree. Susie, you have the floor. Charlie, you're up on deck.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Suzie. You have the floor.
Okay. Hello, planning board. Thank you for continuing this public hearing. My name is Susie Gilbert and I have lived in Phillips Town for 32 years. I became a faithful Shakespeare supporter in the early 1990s. I have no desire to see it disappear. I am delighted that Kurt Rhodes and Nance Williamson will be starring as Romeo and Juliet this summer. That said, I am appalled at the size of the development proposed by the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival. If it were just a move up the hill, as Fred Rich so absurdly describes it, I would be on board. However, it is one of the biggest potential developments Garrison has ever seen. Shakespeare has suddenly become a big developer. They want to take the equivalent of a small regional carnival and turn it into Six Flags. I have spent years fighting developers who didn't care what kind of impact their projects would have on our fragile rural environment. Developments like Point Lookout, Mountain Trace, Lake Valhalla Estates, Hudson Highlands Reserve. Should we have trusted them to do what's right for Phillips Town? If not, then why would we trust Hudson Valley Shakespeare? Why would anyone trust them to be stewards of the land when their entire project violates our comprehensive plan? They have polarized this project. So the average Phillips Town resident believes the only choice is monster Shakespeare or no Shakespeare at all. This is textbook. Big developers crank up their PR machines, shoot for something insane, then scale back depending on how much they outrage the locals. The only difference with Shakespeare is that while they're proposing this 35 plus million dollar project, they're also telling us they're still our little hometown theater and we should trust them. This public hearing is about the environmental impacts this project will cause, which are obviously myriad and have been described in detail by others. I urge the planning board to issue a positive declaration, not to stop this project, to shrink it, to make it as promised, a move up the hill. If this developer gets preferential treatment, every other developer heading our way will want the same. In closing, I have two questions, not for the planning board, but for Chris Davis. One, why did you turn from conservationist into developer? And two, if you win and you get your six flags, is this what you want as your legacy? Thank you.
Hey Suzie, thank you very much. Charlie Dupree is next, followed by Ben Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board for your hard work and dedication to public service. Can you hear me just to check?
Yeah, go ahead, Charlie.
Thank you. I've timed my comments the last two minutes. My name is Charlie Dupree. I and my family live on Travis Corners Road and have lived here for 20 years. Our house is a little less than one mile from the proposed site of the open air amphitheater. As a general matter, I echo the comments that were just made. I am very supportive of Shakespeare making its home at the golf course. However, I do believe that the scale of the planned operations exceed the ability of the existing infrastructure to support it, certainly with respect to water and probably with respect to transportation. The issue I want to focus on has received much less attention in the prior meetings, and that is noise pollution. Several years ago, the Garrison hosted happy hour on summer evenings. The noise had major negative impact on quality of life. The sound ricocheted around the bowl of the hills that surround the three sides of the golf course. And it sent us indoors at the most beautiful time of night on the most beautiful days of the year, every single time. I confess, I do not understand to what extent the Shakespeare plan contemplates amplified or live music. But there, but this issue should be vetted as part of the environmental review. This open air, open air theater, if it is approved, will be there for decades. It is inevitable that sooner or later some enterprising artistic director will in good faith have the bright idea to stage live or amplified music as part of a program. We can debate the size of the audience for Shakespeare, but we all know that the size of the audience for music is enormous. Look at Tanglewood, two hours north of here, an hour and a half west of Boston. Garrison is 50 miles from Midtown Manhattan. If this project is approved, whether in its proposed scale or a reduced scale, it is critical that there be clear restrictions on number one, musical productions and number two, amplification for outside productions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. We've got Ben Green next, followed by, thank you, followed by James Kelly. Just to be clear, for anyone who'd like to speak, please press the raise your hand button. I think a couple of you have asked Cheryl to speak, but you're not raising your hands. And then for those of you who have already spoken, I believe Carol and Patricia, you've already spoken before, I'm going to the new speakers. That's why I haven't gotten you yet. Okay, Ben, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Ben.
Yeah, my wife and I, Francesca, have lived off Travis Corners Road for about 22 years in the Upland Water Basin area. And, uh, you know, it was very encouraging that the board required a pumping test in response to Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival's EAF water recharge calculations. But one would like to believe that a secret neg deck would not be issued and could not be issued prior to testing and results. As there have been quite a few reports of well water issues in the area, including our own, it would also inspire confidence if the planning board could require Hudson it would also inspire confidence if the Planning Board could require Hudson Valley Shakespeare to conduct a survey of homes that depend on the Upland Basin to get a better sense of whether an actual problem exists, and if so, how it would be mitigated. An additional eight thousand gallons of water daily would have the impact of adding a twenty-five home subdivision to the site. This including the current usage would put the number closer to a fifty to sixty home subdivision. And this is, this is based on the average of three hundred gallons a day, which I think is in the, in the Putnam County consensus. Anyway, we don't object to Hudson Valley Shakespeare moving to the golf course and operating as they have at their current level at Boscabel. But without municipal water, sewer, and access to public transportation, we do not feel the golf course is an appropriate location for the plan as proposed. There just isn't the infrastructure for a major cultural center, and it's hard to foresee how there would not, how there wouldn't be a negative environmental and community impact. And just really, you know, want to thank the Planning Board for their extraordinary effort. I mean, this thing is huge. It's a huge application. It's a huge development. Just don't think as proposed, it's appropriate for this site. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Mr. James Kelly, and then followed by Carol Markland, please. Markland, go ahead. Go ahead, James. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much for letting me speak. I'd like to echo many others who have spoken that I am in favor of Shakespeare, but again, I think the project's too large. I believe that the parking lots will be too visible at four hundred and eighty spots, you know, which is better golf course or parking lots, I really believe. Golf course at least is open space. I did a lot of research looking into the history of the property and I noticed that in the EAF that there was no, they're claiming that there was nothing really of historic value there, but due to the proximity of, of the north and south redouts, and I found out that there were several interesting archaeological digs over the years there that I feel that there needs to be a little bit more exploration there. It was the site of a great mansion up until eighteen fifty-nine called Walnut Ridge, which burned, which was the original Bill Brown's and originally George Luff and George Fox estate. So I feel like, and also about the contiguous historic sites, it's not just the parsonage and the mansion across the street and the church. There's several other historic homes that are contiguous to the golf course, maybe not abutting the current development site. And also in the process of researching the property, I found how many accidents have occurred at that intersection from the dawn of the automobile till now? I mean, there, there's over a hundred people have died at that intersection from the dawn of the automobile till present day that I just found in newspaper searches on Google newspapers and Old Fulton History. So traffic study is a big thing. And, you know, again, I echo all the environmental concerns as well. But I just think some, I think the site itself needs to be regarded. The applicant needs to look into the history of the site because it is historic site. It is, things happened there. The hate farmhouse was located approximately where the caretaker's cottage is now. There was a pre-revolutionary war farmhouse. I think this stuff needs to be investigated a little further and I never, I haven't heard anybody mention anything about that. But I'm just going to try to keep it brief. That's all I really wanted to say. And thank you very much. And thanks for doing such a good job.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Hopefully, hopefully that is what we do. In fact, that's what we're hoping to do. So thank you for that. Ms. Mark Quan, you have three minutes. When you start, I'm going to start the timer. I'm going to ask you to stop the three minute mark, please.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to read a letter from Pat and Kat Downing, who were very sorry they're not able to attend tonight. So, four years ago, we moved from a neighborhood in Brooklyn that was so disfigured by development that many of the original residents could no longer afford to, or perhaps didn't even want to live there anymore. We have witnessed the perils of overdevelopment in the city, but also in the Hudson Valley and overseas. Overdevelopment rips the best parts of a community out at the root, and those best parts, the ones that create, lure and draw, are the ones that are nearly impossible to regrow. Like so many of you have already articulated, we moved to Garrison for the rural character and natural environment, the very same environment that is under constant pressure due to climate change and the continued impact of human activities on the natural world. This is also the same environment that we're asking to take the brunt of the proposed plans without a full and clear understanding of the real time environmental and ecological impact of this project on the land, the water, the air. It is critical that whatever is created has buy-in from the entire community, especially those most impacted by the coming changes. We are also concerned that there is a direct conflict between these plans and the Phillips Town Comprehensive Plan, which was designed to safeguard our community against this exact type of overdevelopment and protect our natural environment. While our community is discussing this project specifically, we are also asking some very existential questions about who we are as a community and what we want in the future, which is why this is such a critical juncture for all of us. Yes, change will come, but fortunately, we still have the right to participate in our democracy and decide what that will look like. We join our neighbors in asking for a positive secret review to create a pause button to stop and consider what this transformational change could do to Garrison and to the wider community of Phillips Town. Once we go down this road, there is no turning back, so we urge the board to take the time to weigh these major decisions as they will affect all of us for decades to come. Thank you. Pat and Kat Downing, Garrison. Thanks.
Thank you, Darrell. All right, Alex Clifton, you're up.
Hello, this is Alex Clifton. I have lived in Garrison for fifty-one years, since the year I was born. Grew up on a dirt road here, still live on a dirt road. My father and I volunteered for the Shakespeare Festival when it was in a circus tent at Boscabel, setting up lights. And then years later, I auditioned and I was an actor in three productions of the Shakespeare Festival. And the Shakespeare Festival is very near and dear to my heart. I wanted to say that I too support the festival and the location, but I echo the sentiments of many of the folks here saying this is a lot bigger than just moving from Boscabel up to the Garrison. It seems to be growing at a massive, like, it's a massive change in size. And I echo what Susie Gilbert said. I echo what James Kelly said. And basically, you know, the message that we're getting is, well, we should be glad that we're supporting the arts and that this is not being turned into a massive development. Yet, the approach taken to this is very much the same as a massive development. Let's see how much we can ask for upfront and it will get away with as much as we possibly can. And I think that it's just unfortunate that people who are supporting this also feel like they have to push back and say, hey, this is like too huge. Let's be reasonable. And so I, I just think that it's, it's getting pushed through too fast and things need to slow down because it's just way too big. I am pro dirt road all the way. If this implies any paving of any dirt roads, I'm gonna, you know, we've got to get the Old Road Society in here. I don't know if anyone is in here right now from the Old Road Society, but that is also very near and dear to my heart, and so is the Shakespeare Festival. So I really hope that we can come to some great resolution, but it's just, I just feel like it's very unfortunate that it's like such an overreach and like sort of, you know, taking something that we care about and like piling on top of it, like dog piling on top of it. So thank you for listening to me. I appreciate your time and your efforts and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton. Patricia Burwold, you have a three minute block. I believe you spoke already, then we'll follow by Betty Stafford. So Miss Burwold, if you want to come in.
Hi, this is Jay Brenner, Patty's husband. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, sir. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
So Summer Stock versus Regional Performing Arts Center. My concerns, one is water usage. With this development proposal, who will pay for our water wells to be dug deeper when we run out of water? In the past, when the golf course was drawing from all of its wells, surrounding homes ran out of water. The golf course cut back on water usage to solve the local problem. The new proposal doubles the usage of fresh water and increases the number of wells on the property. How can the Planning Board move forward without having proper studies and guarantee that there will be enough water for all? Two is the sound pollution, but I won't repeat what everybody else is saying. But number three, which is the proposed bridge on Snake Hill Road. Has there been a proper study to see if Snake Hill Road can safely handle the proposed increase in traffic? What about the environmental impact of the building the two lane bridge across the protected wetlands? Can the local road handle heavy construction? There is no room for a turning lane. What will happen to my driveway, which is directly across from the proposed bridge? And finally, can Snake Hill actually be a safe access late at night with many people being well over there in their sixties? You, the Planning Board, can reduce the size of this project and the HDSF can remain a thriving theater organization without overwhelming its quiet, quiet rural host. I plead with the Planning Board to issue a positive declaration. Thank you. I encourage modifications and beg for negotiations. Thank you.
Mr. Burwold, thank you. Betty Stafford, followed by Al Smith. Betty, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the Planning Board for all their hard work and efforts on behalf of the community. This is one of the largest proposed developments here in recent memory. We are privileged, my husband and I, to have lived in Garrison for over thirty years, raising a family and enjoying the becalic feel and peaceful atmosphere this beautiful area provides. News of the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival move up the hill to the Garrison Golf Course property brought us warm memories of the past Hudson Valley Shakespeare performances and a sense of relief that they would continue to be a part of our community. However, like everyone else, we have a strong and positive association with the Hudson Valley Festival. It's difficult to view the project through any other lens. Nevertheless, the ensuing, ensuing debate has brought into focus real concerns about the size and scope of the plan and its impact on the area. The influx of up to twelve hundred visitors each day cannot help but have a big impact on a quiet village and the lives of its roughly twenty-five hundred residences. The proposed entrance on Snake Hill Road seems to have poor sightlines from either direction. Turning off or onto Route Nine on either proposed access point also seems hazardous. The addition of a traffic light and turning lanes, while helpful, could inadvertently create other opportunities for accidents resulting from sudden stops on this busy stretch of road. In addition to many traffic concerns and the proposed bridge on Snake Hill Road, our real concern is about water usage. As every other people have mentioned previously, our home is located in close proximity to the Garrison Golf Course on Travis Corner Road in the center of the Upland Basin, contributing to site groundwater identified on exhibit number sixty-three of the plan. We believe our well was negatively impacted when the Garrison Golf Course drilled new wells in years past, causing us to have to drill a new well and replace the pump at great expense. I can't think of a neighbor who has not been through this process, whether it was related to activities at the golf course or otherwise. Our aquifers in general seem to be at risk from climate change, et cetera. These are repeated reminders that our aquifer is a fragile and very finite resource that needs to be protected. There's really not much debate that additional usage will tax the aquifer regardless if it's three hundred, six hundred, or twelve hundred additional people per day accessing the resource. The town's twenty thirty Comprehensive Plan guides us to monitor and protect our aquifers and recharge areas and ensure that land use practices do not threaten water quality or quantity. This actions cannot simply be read as an aspirational goal. We must be vigilant stewards. An adequate clean water supply is foundational to our life here. Expert comments on groundwater and well water supply issues previously provided to the board by Howard Davis seems to support our common sense concerns about these matters. Will the board require Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival to perform a seventy-two hour water pump test in late summer? Will said test include a check of the water quality for heavy metals and pesticides? Will never neighboring wells be included in the test? There are so many issues for the board to sort through, but this point alone indicates to us that a positive declaration would be the prudent and rational decision at this time. Let's move deliberately and methodically with such an enormous undertaking and make sure we get it right. Thank you so much and appreciate your time and efforts.
All right, Miss Stafford, thank you. And last on Zoom, we'll take Al. You're welcome, Miss Stafford. Thank you. Take Al Smith and then we'll go back to my fellow Neil in the Phillips Town Town Hall. Al, you have the floor.
Oh, I have the floor. Do you hear me?
We got you. Hello.
What happened?
You know, that we've never had that happen in two years is an absolute miracle. So let's, I think we'll have to wait for Al and the other ninety-five. Okay, take it easy.
Turn it all over again.
We want to go.
Let's, yeah, Neil, let's just, let's just give her, let's just give it a couple of minutes to get people to rejoin because a lot of people were, even if it's in the room, they want people on Zoom want to hear it. So let's just.
So much for me driving back tonight.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna close this, this meeting tonight no later than ten thirty. And when our business is concluded here, we'll try and, if we finish our work with that. I, I don't want you having to, yes, everyone should be able to get home.
Get up at six.
Well, that's another day to your one hundred eighty-four.
I, I'm not going to get anywhere close.
No, that's good.
Well, I wish I were.
All right, got it. All right. Well, I don't know if anyone, oh, we have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I see sixty-one. We, I think we have what I would call a quorum. Is Al, do we have Al back on?
Not yet.
Okay, well, let's do this. Neil, let's turn to the, in the room, please, to the next speaker. And again, sticking with our plan, if Al, if Al Smith rejoins, we'll
Sure, Mr. Cutler. Followed by Marcy Fish. Or Sarah Wallace. Okay.
Hi there. My name is Robert Cutler. I've lived in Garrison for a long time. And I want to say, first of all, I am in favor of Shakespeare. There's no question about that. I also am looking forward to seeing Nance and Kurt and Romeo and Juliet this, this summer very much. But I also agree with so many people who have said, please scale this thing down. It's gotten bigger than Ben-Hur and we do not need Ben-Hur here in Garrison. And there are lots of good ways that that can be done. I'm sure this Planning Board can help us figure it out and to save Shakespeare, but get it down to where it ought to be. I'm going to try to rearrange my thoughts a little bit because, because there are many people who want to talk, but I love what you said, Grady. Is that your name? About getting the tent off the hill. It's been my major beef from the beginning, as you know. There, I look no further than to the great court case with the Storm King Mountain, where the judge was gobsmacked by the claim by the Con Ed lawyer who said that the mountain would look better with the plant than without the plant. And the case came out and the And the case came out and the final finding of that was, because it was such a preposterous claim, that it killed the case for Con Ed. And the, the final ruling was, the court said that the FPC, the Federal Power, Power Commission, which was actually, had given the license to Con Ed. The court said the FPC, when planning its projects, had to include the preservation of natural beauty. Well, when you look at that wonderful ridge of ours, you know, putting a tent up there is not preserving its natural, natural beauty. There is no argument that can be made that says it is. It's just as preposterous as saying the plant was going to look, the mountain's going to look better with the plant on it. So, I urge the board to take that into consideration when you're thinking about, because that's, that's environmental law. You know, we ridge lovers have the law on our side on that one. There's another, another factor comes into play here, and that is when I've asked the Shakespeare people, why do they have to have the tent? What's the reason for putting the tent up on the ridge? And the answer always is the view, the view is so beautiful. Well, of course, the view is beautiful, but why do you have to be able to see the view when you're at a Shakespeare play? And if you think about this and track it through, when I go to a Shakespeare play at Boscabel, and the, the experience will be the same. You go to a play and you maybe have a picnic and you sit out on that wonderful lawn and you look at that view for two hours. And then somebody comes by and says, the show's going to start in 15 minutes. So then you gather all your stuff up and you amble into the tent, along with the other people who, and the non-picnickers who have gotten early. They amble in the tent as well. They've all come to see the view, now we go into the tent and within a few minutes, the, the play starts. And of course, it's one of the most dramatic entrances in all of, in all of theater. Because we all know, having gone there, what's going to happen? We know that, that up from nowhere, we're going to see a bunch of, a band, and sometimes it's eight or nine, all running and shouting and hooting and howling. And they come into the tent and they, boom, they're there. And we're, we cannot help but look at them, all eyes are upon them, we're not looking at the view, we're looking at them. Think of Nance Williamson in doing Martha Washington last summer. I wasn't doing this, trying to look past Nance, look at the view. No, when you're, when you're there in the tent and you're in the middle of those plays and they're coming back and forth to you like this, the play's the thing, as somebody said. Okay, so, and at that point, of course, the view disappears in 20 minutes anyway. So there you are alone with these wonderful people, and look, the tent could be anywhere. It doesn't have to be up there. And the claim that being up there and, and being able to look down and look at the view, actually to look at the play and ignore the vanishing view, to me is absolutely silly. I don't think it has any merit at all. The tent could be anywhere, and where better could it be then, right next to the parking lot? Wouldn't that make sense? So everybody, when the play is over, you walk out, 40 yards away, there's the parking lot, why put it anywhere else? The reason that makes sense to me is that you limit the, the environmental imprint or impact of the theater activity to that one area. And you leave that nice, wonderful hillside where the ridge is to the people who live there, the creatures. Interesting thing I found out. 80, 87% of the creatures who live on that hill are, are nocturnal. Here's the math, 69% are nocturnal, 20% are daytime. Now, the 9% hunt in the daytime and the nighttime, and 2% are, are only at dusk, swallows. So you take the nine and you take the 69, and you've got 77%, excuse me, that's the number, 77%. Three quarters are nocturnal, so when the play is going on, that's nocturnal, this is nocturnal. So why not let these people do their thing? The actors and the, and the, and the visitors, and leave the hillside alone to those creatures? Because I'll tell you who they are, so we can put a name to it. We've got skunks, possums, raccoons, we got foxes, we got coyotes, we got owls, we got bats, and we've got porcupines. There are porcupines here, I checked with the guys at the Hudson River Museum, they said, oh yeah, they're out there. They said, they're very shy, but they said, you will smell them before you find them, so fair warning on the porcupines. Anyway, the point is, these creatures have lived on that hillside for 11,000 years since when the, when the the ice sheets left. And they have, therefore, it seems to me, a much stronger claim on that hillside than the, than the actors and the, and the visitors. So leave the hillside alone. The last point on this one is, if, about bringing the, the tent and near the parking lot is the people who go to Shakespeare, a third of them, maybe a third, maybe 30%, something like that, are older people. Me, older people, you're not older, look, you're also young, you're also young, you don't know. But we older people, you know what we do, we fall down, right? And this is the deal, this is, this is good, flat is good, little incline, huh? But this is terrible because we put our foot down, there's nothing there and over we go. Now, if you take the 500 person tent, you've got 30% people up there, 150 older people are in that tent. Every night, okay, six, seven, how many, seven performances, that's 1,000 a week. 13 weeks in the season, let's say 13,000 people, old people are going to be coming down that hill at night? That's, if I were an insurance guy, I'd be worried at this point, okay? But Shakespeare said, oh, don't worry about that, Robert, we're going to have wonderful trails, lighted trails all the way down the, all the way down the hill. And they'll be, they'll be dark skylighting, which is terrific, nothing wrong with that. But, old people fall down in the night and the day, so lighting it up isn't going to help. No, and besides which, besides which, how are the owls and the, and the raccoon's going to like it, like it all lit up? So for heaven's sakes, you know, make a deal with, with the wildlife. Here's, here, here's the parking lot, here's the tent, and let them do their thing, and let these people do their thing. Now, that's number one, number two is the hidden cost of, the hidden cost of stewardship. I believe very much that the Shakespeare people will do a good job of taking care of this land. The, the ones I know take, are wonderful owners of their property, the board members. But there's a hidden cost of stewardship, which is this. If you think, you can't predict the future, you have to worry about what's going to happen. Good things happen, bad things happen. Let's think about, you go north on Route 9, and you get to 84, south of it is Home Depot. And south of that is a dead mall, which the worst side in Phillips, worst side in Putnam County. It used to be a farm owned by Steve and Peggy Blodgett, they sold it to some guy who went broke and disappeared. Okay, we don't want that. Now, let's go down to south of Manitoba where I used to live. And James Glick built a windmill up on his place. And I, I fought that, not because I didn't think his interest in science, and he's a great science writer, as you probably know. He was interested in seeing how this would work. I don't think he ever thought he was going to actually sell energy back to the grid with this windmill, but he, he wanted to put it up. I fought it because I thought, my God, we're going to have, if the planning board gives him permission, we're going to have windmills all over the place. And I don't, all over this wonderful highlands of ours, and I was against that. Especially since this is not a place where wind is a factor anymore. There are wind farms north of here, but not here. So I fought it and I bumped into John Cronin in the Foodtown parking lot when I was moaning and groaning to him, and he said, look, Robert, here's the deal. The, that windmill in 20 to 35 years is going to be obsolete, they're going to have advances in technology, which will improve them. And at some point, that guy or the next guy who owns it is going to turn it off and walk away. And then what's going to happen is the windmill is going to finally collapse 50 years later in the forest and is going to be there for thousands of years. He said, I recommend that you recommend to the planning board that anybody who wants to put up a windmill has to put up a bond to dismantle and remove and repair the land and restore the land. And that's what I'm proposing to you guys, or suggesting to you guys, that, that since we don't know what's going to happen in this 20 year period when Shakespeare will be managing this land. They should put up a bond to cover the, the possible removal and dismantling of the tent, of the parking lot, of everything else. Because you just don't know what's going to happen, and if something terrible, maybe something will be great, maybe they'll have a great future here, but maybe bad things will happen. I don't want the citizens of Cole, of Cole Spring, excuse me, Phillips Town, to have to pay for the removal of all that, right?
This is a secret review for the property.
Okay, but, but this, does this proposal of a bond fall under it?
You're out there.
I'm stretching, okay, okay, so we're, I mean, okay, so think of it as a, think of it as an environmental insurance for the future. And now, end of, end of this one, but I think it's important, I really do. I think, I think Cronin had a very good point. Okay, now let's go to the last point, and here, I have some good news for Shakespeare, actually, I hope. To begin with, the, the, the intersection of Snake Hill and Travis, of course, we all know there are dangers there. If you keep going south on 9, you get to Ensville Circle, it's a nice roundabout. If you go up to Conic to 44, go west, there are a series of little roundabouts to take you into Pleasant Valley. So I looked up roundabouts and I found out in every DOT survey that I could, that, that traffic lights are five times as dangerous as roundabouts. Interesting, so I leave you with that idea, it's an interesting one, right? But the real danger point, of course, is not that intersection, that's kind of a red herring. The real one is the main entrance and exit, the main gate of the golf course. Coleman comes in here, intersected by, of course, Route 9. You've got a passing lane for the northbound traffic, which ends on the top of the hill. Some people go 55, a lot of them are going 70 miles an hour, I know that because I live in Coleman Road and I see them every day. Same deal from the south, you get the speeders going past on the, on the passing lane, they come up. That passing lane ends about 200 yards short of the, of the gate. So there's a real nightmare. Somebody wrote a letter to the PCNR and said, I don't see why it's going to be a problem, there's a, coming out of Shakespeare plays at Boscabel, there's a policeman with a flashlight, and he guides us safely onto 9D. Who do you think wants to stand in the middle of Route 9 with a flashlight at 11 o'clock at night? Nobody, and no police chief will ever assign that job to anybody. So we've got a real mess. Solution, I'm going to give you two solutions here. First solution is, simply don't allow people to leave that exit after 8 o'clock at night. And take them off the site some other way. There are two other ways to get off the site, you don't have to go off that way. One site is going to be the new bridge that they're going to build across the wetland, that's a possible way, although that has problems too. Another way is a much better way. About, two years ago, we walked down and Chip Element gave us a proposal down at the maintenance shed area about the, the golf course. They were trying to save the nine holes. It was a good idea, I wish it had worked, it didn't, unfortunately. At any rate, we then walked up the road. We walked up the road at that point, Neil, you said to me, windy up in that ridge, remember that? At any rate, so if you go down that road, it empties out onto Snake Hill Road. It's a nice, long straight stretch there, 500 yards long, you can see in each direction coming at it. Why not just improve that exit road? Why not, you know, make right turn right, left turn right, you will have a nice, safe way to get off the site. What you can do about this, think of all the winners, if this works. Number one winner is the environment, you don't have to build a giant bridge across that wetland. Number two is scenic, scenic beauty, not going to have to look at a bridge going across the wetland. Number, next winner is Shakespeare, they're not going to have to build the bridge. Next winner is Shakespeare also, they're going to save all the time of building that bridge. Next winner is the visitors who are going to have a safer way to get off the site by going down over there. And the big winners are Jay and Patty Bremer, they're not going to have all these, all these headlights going into their living room all night long. And the last winners, I thought of this, are the, the actors in the little, in the little cabins? Because they'll have a nice, convenient way to get off, so, to get off the sites, a nice, safe way to get off the site. So there are seven winners here. Now, maybe there were seven reasons why it doesn't work, but it seems to me that this would be a solution to the traffic problem. Okay, I'm going to finish up this quickly by saying this. Okay. A few years ago, a friend of mine came to me and he hadn't stayed in, in Garrison for about 30 years, and he said, this place is like Brigadoon, it never changes. And, you know, I can see what he's, and we went down the main street of Cole Spring, and it doesn't look any different when I moved here when I was 12. But of course, it does change, you know, the only constant is change. And the fact of the matter is that you guys have been, you planning board members for decades, going back, have been able to manage the change and keep this place like Brigadoon. And that is not difficult, it hasn't turned into Poughkeepsie, it hasn't turned into Greenwich. It's the job you have done, and what we're asking you is, scale this thing down, keep doing the good work you are, thank you.
Neil, let's try and get Al Smith, who's our one, who's in the middle of starting his windup, and then we lost the internet.
Right.
Well, the internet shutting down when I start is sort of typical, so let's see what happens. I love what, what was just said, except it would dump everything onto Snake Hill, which couldn't handle even the limited amount it may be getting, now you're pushing everything onto Snake Hill, that's not what I was talking about. I've been here over 40 years, and I'm also from the entertainment industry. I can't understand why, you're doing a 30 year plan, and I was wondering how much of the infrastructure for the 30 year plan is being currently built? If, if you just built what was necessary to move Shakespeare Theater to where it's going, and they, what I found out last week is for next summer, they're just using the same tent and putting it in a temporary location, they don't expect it to be any larger than it's currently been. Last planning board meeting, one guy from the Shakespeare Board was defending the traffic, the people who were objecting to traffic on 9D by pointing out that Shakespeare never really sells out, there never really has that much business, and you don't have to worry about all this traffic. Yet, you're talking about building this huge facility that doesn't make sense. I don't, I come from the entertainment world, I guarantee you, if you put in everything you're talking about in terms of electricity and access and stuff like that. And Shakespeare doesn't begin to make money, and they start letting some entertainment venues be used. They're building an indoor theater, so let's put a show in there, the show does business, it'll make money. People will, in the entertainment business, will turn it into a venue, it'll start to make money. So now Shakespeare won't play, and the entertainment will play. So, I guess I was much better before I got cut off before, anyway. One way of getting around the noise pollution is to limit that you don't have electric. Shakespeare isn't an electric, one of the beauties of going there is actors speaking in natural voices, and you're hearing it because of the, that's just what's going on, so don't allow electric music to be done there, don't allow microphones, don't allow amplification. Don't build an indoor theater, if you build an indoor theater, it's the old, you build it, they will come. The indoor theater will provide a place for entertainment, that entertainment will make money. Even a nonprofit likes to make money. So I guess that's, you know, I used myself up when I got cut off, but keep it small, that seems to be a theory. There have been some very educated people who have presented arguments that aren't just emotional, mine's just emotional. And it just feels like there's a stretch going on that isn't necessary, and under the guise of saying you're moving Shakespeare, you're creating a possible problem for Garrison in years to come. Limit it, let them just build phase one. Don't let them put in infrastructure for the 30 year plan until you see how the one year plan or two year plan works. They can always add it later on, that's my spiel.
Thank you, Al.
How you doing on your vacation, Neil, is it nice down there?
Thank you, Mr.
Well, it was nice until about 7:30 this evening, but otherwise, it's doing great, Al, you're sweetheart, thank you, buddy.
Very good, Mr. Carlin.
All right, Neil, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlin.
My name is Delmar Carlin, I live in Garrison and have lived there for most of my life. Many of the things I was going to say, quite a bit have been said, so I'm not going to go over them in a great detail. A couple of amplifications of, a couple of points. One of the commenters talked about the hydrogeologist's report for water. And I thought that was a very good point, that, that report says that methodology used by the consultants for Hudson Valley Shakespeare is flawed. That there's not going, likely will not be the recharge they think there will be for the water. And water is a big concern, you've heard from many people about that. So I think that alone warrants additional investigation and would call for a positive declaration. As to noise, many of those points have been covered, too. I would add one, which cleaned up. I hope, I think it's real, but I haven't heard it before. When you have a lot of traffic on nine slowing down, stopping, accelerating up and down the hills, particularly the heavy trucks, that's going to add to a lot of noise. You, you, you go to the stoplights, uh, on, uh, nine D at four oh three or the stoplight at three oh one nine, and you hear the trucks using engine braking. Uh, you hear them straining to get back up the hill. You'll get that on both sides of, uh, of the, uh, venue with, to the, to the south, they'll be coming down the hill and then going up the hill similarly to the north. As to the tent, uh, Mr. Cutler made a very good point. And I just had it, I'd thought of it in somewhat similar way. My question is, why would people who want to put on a play, want to focus the attention on the view? You'd think they'd want to focus it on the play. So I agree with that completely. And finally, I think, um, this is taken all together, which is what you, you have to look at. It is a big project and it is not, uh, it's a big change to the community. And, uh, under SECR, the community and the nature of the neighborhood are appropriate considerations. And, uh, comprehensive plan calls for it to be a, a bucolic peaceful area. Having a significantly expanded entertainment complex there, uh, is not consistent with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. We'll ask again that remember to mute your cell phones and when you're here during public hearing. So we're now down to the, um, this is the second time around. So we're down to the three minute club. I do have a timer. Ms. Calhoun followed by Joe Wrigley, followed by Stephen Wallace.
Good evening, my friends. I appreciate, appreciate this chance to speak. I have three particular concerns about the Shakespeare event. First, the existing dam bridge road item from Snake Hill Road onto the golf course is in danger. A leak develops, the structure is fragile and needs repair. Neither the current management nor the wishful management is concerned. Re- rejecting responsibility, they say, let the state take care of it. This indicates to me the kind of real responsibility they don't have. Second, the previous comprehensive plan updated Phillips Town zoning. Most land is rural conservation. My property, for example, changed from two acres to ten acres for a building lot. There also were special overlays such as scenic ridge lines and many people have talked about the ridge. The Garrison Golf Course naturally was a prominent scenic ridge until someone decided to eliminate the special status. It was removed from zoning maps, marking the town approved, community chosen comprehensive plan that benefited us all. The line is gone from the zoning maps. My third concern is the special permit. I know that's not exactly environmental, but it's a big concern. It is a permit to hold an event that takes place for one day, maybe two days, maybe a week. That's the way it's written. It is not written for a month, several months, all summer or forever, forever. No. That special permit is not appropriate for Shakespeare to provide, to move for next summer. I would like to trust our town board to support the town laws and regulations. Shakespeare and Graymore should not be allowed to inundate our town with too many people, too many cars, buses, alcohol, noise and whatever else they dream up. I don't understand how Graymore can simply do what they want to do with no application for a permit. And Shakespeare is applying for a permit, but it's not even legal to use that permit to give them the right to move.
Thank you. Mr. Wrigley.
It's not even legal to use that permit to give them the right to move.
So Ken is working. Well, I guess I'm, I'm one of the representatives, representatives of the older crowd. And this three minutes, it's a little like speed dating and that's, that was after my time.
Not older than Cutler though. We made that.
Yeah. All right. The dam, quite simply, and I copied the board on my letter to the DEC, the dam's unrated, it's unregistered and it's leaking. Uh, building a bridge downstream from a leaking, unregistered and unrated dam is reckless. We don't know what the spill area is if the dam fails. If there are pilings for the bridge put in an area that it would be designated as a spill area after the state finally gets around to raiding the dam. Bridge is going to have to come down or the piling is going to have to move. The bridge is a nonstarter. Secondly, traffic on Snake Hill Road. The study doesn't address the traffic on Snake Hill Road if the bridge is there. Now, if you dig through the EAF, you'll find that it, they do say at one point that they figure between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty cars will turn right and go down Snake Hill Road. But that's okay because Shakespeare is no longer at Bosco Bell. And because they're no longer at Bosco Bell, there won't be traffic heading south on Route nine D. However, as anyone that looks at the PCNR noticed last week that Bosco Bell has hired their special events director and Bosco Bell is looking at their own special events, their weddings, the things that they're going to do. So the traffic is going to be coming south on ninety. The traffic is going to be coming down Snake Hill Road. There are buses that are totally inappropriate for Snake Hill Road and I, and I, I had to, um, I mean, I, I, I had to smile. I was sitting here earlier. We were talking about East Route, East Mountain Road North in the cumulative effects. We're talking about a hundred thousand people a year getting dropped onto this golf course. And the cumulative effects of this traffic or the cumulative effect of the fact that the Hudson Highlands Land Trust now wants to put a park on the front nine. Now again, where are the people going to park? Are they going to be there on a Saturday? Are they going to be there when there's a matinee up the hill at Shakespeare? How many people are going to be using this Hudson Highlands Land Trust Park? What's the cumulative effect? What if Winter Hill has an event, which is a little further down Snake Hill Road? Snake Hill Road is a small windy road that cannot handle the volume of traffic that is about to get dropped on it. And the EAF doesn't address this other than to say, ah, doesn't matter because we're not coming south from Bosco Bell. Finally, economics, um, I think it's incumbent upon the planning board to require at the very least, no matter what's approved, that pilot payments, payment in lieu of taxes are made by Shakespeare to the community of Garrison. Garrison is going to get whacked by this thing. And what's happening is that the taxes that the Garrison Golf Course was paying will no longer get paid, is going to have to get made up by the Garrison community. Something that's not common knowledge right now, but will come out in the next several weeks is the Garrison School budget is going to be looking to pass a referendum to allow a ten percent tax hike this year to exceed the two percent limit because they don't have enough money. Garrison School doesn't have enough money. Garrison Golf Course is coming off the tax rolls and thirty-five million dollars is being budgeted for this economic, um, entertainment complex, lot of which is our money, federal money, state money, tax dollars, tax deductions. Is it your dollars going to a private nonprofit organization? That's not going to be giving back to the community. And finally, you hear that the community is going to benefit from jobs. The fact of the matter is if you look at the list of consultants with Mr. Watson is, is here. He's the only one, one of two people lucky enough to be a Phillips Town resident who is actually employed by the economic complex. Everybody else is out of town. Out of town and that, that's where the money's going. So.
Wallace. Wallace.
Thanks for hearing me again. Uh, Stephen Wallace, Garrison. Uh, I'm going to try and be real fast on this. My issue and questions concern are about traffic and egress entrance into the golf club. I was at the, uh, the bridge, uh, meeting. We had the walkthrough, um, two Sundays ago. And I had a lot of questions that I asked, uh, which I appreciate being able to ask. Um, but I, Jen, I think his name is, is the, the traffic, Jan, the traffic person. And like, uh, I got, sorry. John, okay. Anyway, so, um, I got answers back, but I didn't, they didn't really compute to me. Um, my concerns are heading south on Route nine out of Foxglove, which is my, where my back entrance to my property is. Uh, I went out this actually today. Uh, let the traffic go by. I wanted to go right. Um, and then I know cars are coming. I make a right. I go quickly over to, uh, try and get over to the, um, the right hand lane on the passing lane, going over the bridge over, uh, Phillips Brook. And I look and all of a sudden someone's like up my, like at my bumper like that, driving like a, you know, insane. And as soon as I move over, you know, beep their horn and everything. It's happened to me many times. Um, I've had people pass me on the, uh, over the, uh, double yellow line. I once was driving my truck. I came off Coleman and someone tried to pass me on my right and they ended up at the guard rail in front of the Garrison Golf Club. And I actually stopped and asked them what was wrong with them. Um, so it's a very dangerous, uh, uh, speedway. And basically the slow lane or the whatever this, you know, there's a passing lane. So the regular lane ends maybe fifty, one hundred feet from the entrance to the Route nine entrance, um, going into the golf club. And I don't, and so people are flying on that passing lane as we know. And so it all bottles up, ends up coming verging, converging right, maybe a hundred feet from the entrance. And I think it's really a dangerous spot as it is now. And so, I mean, someone just died yesterday in a bicycle, getting hit on a bicycle on Route nine. Um, and so, um, by, I was, John said he's going to, they want to put in a right hand turn, turning lane into the entrance. And so I don't, I just drove by her a couple of times today, just looking to say like, where are they going to put it? Are they going to actually put it? Like there's a, um, there's an electric pole there. I just, are they going to move it like onto the, onto the property or are they going to keep it? Or have that, uh, the slow lane, let's say, which is actually the normal lane? Is that going to be the, the turning lane? So if it's a turning lane and people are flying on that fast lane, what's going to happen? And then what happens if people want to come in from the other side? Like, all I know is that no one drives fifty miles an hour on that road. I mean, basically people are flying on the road. So that's one question I really think is important to, uh, address is what's happening on Route nine, getting in there.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Okay. One fast, just real thing. I was just questioning about the bridge, just about the bridge. Um, there's no left hand turning lane. Let's say half the traffic comes from Route nine D, let's say, because you have people, they either come on ninety or nine. So as they're coming from ninety onto Snake Hill, it's the only way to get in. Where that bridge is, uh, there's not going to be any pa, uh, uh, turning lane to get in there. And I addressed that when we had the walkthrough. But I think you might have a bottleneck of cars backed up down, going down Snake Hill and just want to say that's a question also. And it looks like they're just kind of, that's where you have to have it, but it doesn't really fit.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Very good.
Neil, we had, we had, yeah, we had a Mary Ann Coleman who has been coming in and out. And I, I don't know if Ms. Coleman is out there in Zoom land. I don't see her name. She was asked to speak. I responded to her, uh, chat at, uh, a minute after she wrote it, two minutes after. I don't know if there's anyone with her physically co-located. If anyone has her phone number, maybe, maybe there's a friend among the, uh, sixty-two participants that could text her. I do not have her cell phone number. But, uh, we'll hang around for a minute waiting for her.
Perhaps in the meantime, um, Chairman, do you would, do you want to solicit comments from the, from the board while we're waiting before, prior to closing the hearing?
No, I think what we're, our order of battle is the following. And I'll just state that and then we can close the public hearing on Ms. Coleman. Is there, has anyone in the audience in the room there, does anyone there know her? Maybe you can ask them, Neil, if someone knows her and can contact her.
Name me it. Mary Ann Coleman.
Mary Ann, not Susan, Mary Ann.
Mary Ann Coleman.
She's been in and out. She's not there now.
All right. Well, look, let's just, let me just remind everyone what our plan is. Uh, I expect if, uh, Miss, whether Ms. Coleman joins or not, we're going to close the public hearing. Uh, and, uh, I forget which speaker the woman's name was, but she was, she was praising our talented board secretary, Cheryl Rocket, who's also the board secretary for the zoning and the conservation boards. That same talented Cheryl Rocket will be compiling a detailed list of the, I think seventy-five speakers and at least as many letters over the last three meetings totaling seven hours, eight hours of testimony. She's going to compile that down to a manageable, not duplicated list of questions that have been raised. Um, and that will be shared with the applicant. Mr. Wallace has, has agreed to, um, take those questions. And then our next meeting, we start addressing those questions for the, for the public's, uh, benefit. Doesn't mean the public would agree with them, but at least we're going to give the, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to those questions. So we're going to curate those questions and share them, uh, with the applicant. Uh, after that's done, I expect at the May meeting, we will as a board then use that time to in, 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 enter in a substantive conversation as a board, obviously in public uh, about what we've heard so far on SECR as we start, uh, slouching towards a decision on, on SECR. So that's the plan. And, uh, using an interstitial moment, did Ms. Coleman show up any chance?
She going to join, Ron?
Okay. And she can, she can, um, write in, she can, um, she can write a comment, submit it.
Okay. So look, at this point, I'm going to call for a motion to close the public hearing related to the Hudson Valley Shakespeare Festival application. Um, can I motion that, uh, that affect?
I'll move.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
All right. Thank you, Dennis. All right. Any discussion about that motion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstention. So the, the Shakespeare Festival, uh, uh, hearing has, public hearing has closed. Um, someone just asked a question in the chat about writing letters. Um, uh, I think Steve Gab is still here. Uh, Steve. Uh, oh, this, this woman's asking about the questions. Um, I expect we will post those questions publicly, yes. Uh, for public consumption. But, uh, Steve, can you just remind the public about the ability to write in letters going forward, if at all?
Well, uh, in regard to this particular public hearing, um, the, um, the public hearing is closed. And, uh, as a result of that, I would think that you would reach your, your secret determination based on the record. However, there is still the application itself outstanding and the public can write in whatever it is they wish to write in and the board will, as it always does, consider such comments as are received in regard to the substantive issues in the, um, on the application likewise. When SECR is finally completed, however that may turn out in the end, it will be proceedings before the town board in regard to the requested zoning change. There will be another public hearing at that time. Um, and they can write to the town board with their concerns in regard to the zoning change. If, I should say, the zoning change is adopted, the application will come back to the planning board for the substantive um, determination on the application. However, it may be permitted under whatever zoning change, uh, if, if any is granted by the town board. And there'll be another public hearing at that time. So there's going to be plenty of opportunities to comment on this project for this board and town board. Um, however, I, I would think that in regard to, uh, SECR review. However, I would think that in regard to SECR review, you've accepted pretty much all the public comments you're gonna accept.
All right, great. Mr. Wallace, I'm sure you and your fellow representatives have been keeping detailed notes. We're gonna work quickly to get you that list. Cheryl, what's a reasonable timeline you think for putting that list of questions together?
Probably by the end of next week. I'll do it as fast as I can.
Mr. Wallace, that work out for you guys? I know that's, that's a week and, week and a couple days.
That would be fine, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I'd ask for is a little leniency on when we provide our answers, if we could put them in a week before, because it'll be in May that we'll really discuss the answers. So if we could submit by the 14th for the 21st meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think, Dan, I think the issue is more, not issue, the, the expectation in my sense would be for you guys to speak at the meeting and give answers to the questions. You can certainly do it in writing as well, but I think the public commentary will be as useful.
I think, yeah, we'll do it in writing as well, because I think for part of the record, depending on whatever happens with any of the secret determination, it might be important. We'll do both. So we should be prepared to speak about it on the 21st of April?
That's, is that our next meeting? I, if so, well, I'm sure you're, you're ahead of me on that one. Yes, the 21st of April. So that'll be, we'll give you a lot of time, but in pursuant to my next topic, we will take Hunt Potter issue and Hudson Halls Reserve in order first and second in our next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dan, thank you for your, with that, with that, I'd like a motion to adjourn unless any board members have any other business.
Excuse me, Chairman, we have one question from, from the audience here.
Yeah, I, two, actually, two questions, sorry. One, 21st of April, responses by the applicant's house, will the public have an opportunity to ask questions about those responses? I mean, is a response, yeah, we'll look at dialogue, do we have the opportunity to essentially question those responses?
So let me turn this over to Steve. The public comment is over at this point. It will not be a back and forth, as I understand. Steve, just, I think, Mr. Wrigley.
That's absolutely right, Neil. You've heard from the public at great length regarding SECR review and the next steps in terms of determining what SECR actions to take are up to the planning board. Certainly, any information provided by Shakespeare Festival, Garrison Golf will be made available to the public. However, there will not be public comment sessions at the planning board meetings. It'll be between planning board and the applicant to reach the SECR determination.
Thank you, Stephen.
One of the responsible questions is completely outlandish and proposed adding.
All right, let's, Joe, this is, we closed the public hearing, that's, that, there's, that's not a relevant comment to this. We're all, let's all be respectful. No one's being outlandish in their commentary. So anything else?
Yeah, one thing, if I might, so Cheryl will have help from Ron Gainer and AKRF to telescope those questions down, so they're not repetitive from both those resources?
As will I. I'll use the powers of my consulting work to come up with something reasonable. I just want to respond, the Hunt Potter group is continually texting and emailing. So Ms. Hunt or Ms. Potter, whatever the group is, we have spoken to Mr. Gainer, we do not believe we can take care of your matter in one minute. This group has been at it for three hours, and I, it is my duty to, to be clear-headed when we make decisions. After three hours, it's longer than a typical meeting, we're gonna have to close at this point. So I apologize that we couldn't get to you. Unfortunately, you're not the first person to have to deal with this in the last two years under Zoom, and the enormous amount of building and activity in the community, we're going as fast as we can as a board. So appreciate your consideration as well.
Joey.
Can I have a motion, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Mr. Wrigley, you submitted in writing, please.
I did, on the 28th of January, and I'm still waiting for an answer.
I'm sorry, Neil, I'm not following the dialogue you're having with Joe Wrigley.
We're, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Wrigley. We're looking for, we're looking for a motion to adjourn the public.
I got, I got Kim, who's been a primary, can I get a second on the motion to adjourn? Laura, commentary, any conversation? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, thank you for your service. We'll see you at April 21st. We'll take up Hunt first, and then we'll take up.
Thank you.
Thank you all, good night.